Town of Stockbridge Planning Board to order on January 19th. Thank you all for joining. Members and guests and visitors and observers and applicants and their advisors. The first item of the minutes of the agenda is actually to approve two minutes. Both the one from January 5th and the previous one, you'll remember that the previous minutes which Jennifer distributed. A week or so ago were deferred because of. A little necessity of correcting some wording and we didn't vote on them. But I'd like to vote on them tonight along with the ones from January 5th. So. Yeah, I have a motion to approve. Let's see if we can approve both minutes at the same time to approve both those minutes. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion, any corrections, additions, deletions? On either set of minutes. Hearing none. Jennifer, if you're, there you are. You moved on my screen.
I'm ready.
Can you call the roll, please?
Yes. Gary?
Yes.
Marie?
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
Christine?
Hi.
Wayne?
Hi.
Wayne? Kate?
Hi.
Nancy?
Hi.
Kate? And me, Nancy. Okay, got it, everybody.
Thank you. As I mentioned, the agenda, we're going to jiggle the agenda around just a little bit. To accommodate, I think, in part Sally from the Concom who has grandchildren afoot. And so we'd like to do that now and welcome Sally and Ron to the meeting. You'll recall that in previous discussions, we had. Thought that it might make sense to get these two committees, boards together to at least begin the process if we, if there's a will. To. Have a look at the bylaws and the practices and procedures of the two organizations, the two bodies. To see if, if there's. A basis for rationalizing any, any parts of that for, and the example that's, I think occurs to many of us is. Responsibility for LPOD application, applications that involve the LPOD. That seems to me to be an obvious one that ought to be in one place or the other, but maybe not both. But there are probably others as well, and I know Sally and Ron may have thought about those other. Situations where we could try to clarify and obviously we can't do it on our own. This would probably have to go to town meeting. To rationalize any bylaws that we determine would benefit from a change. But we thought we'd get the discussion going tonight, if only for a few minutes. And we can follow up in, in subsequent meetings. Ron or Sally, do you want to say anything about this? Process?
The only real issues we've had is. It's not so much a communication issue, but we've had people come to us with. Looking for approvals. For projects and lately more often now, we've asked if they've been to the planning board yet. And if they say yes or no, it's a good thing to, for us just to step back and say, well. We'd be glad to give you some approvals or options, but we don't think in this case that we're, we should be the first. And sometimes. We can see that we're not going to have an issue with it. And we may tell them that, but then they, then they'll go to you people and say, well, the planning, the conservation commission gave us a go ahead. Well. So we've got to be in tighter communications with each other. Either maybe the minutes of our meeting and some of our conversations should go back and forth. Especially when we have these applications that have only been approved. Well, one of the others only going to be approved by one of us. So that's the way it is, but. We should just look at some of these approvals and then we have the site visit thing and it all starts to run together. We've been to the site visit. We haven't been to the site visit. You people need to see the site. So these. One, each, each meeting a week or two apart doesn't, doesn't give us much time to get these things done. So. It's hard for us. To, to finalize. Approvals or disapprovals. Without input from each one of us and we were trying to do the best we can with, with suggestions. But sometimes. There just aren't any good suggestions. So. If, if we have a discussion with you on, on how we set the timing of these meetings or, or order. Each individual meetings or communications of what we approved, what we didn't approve, what we didn't like and what we did like. Maybe that would help each, each committee to, to form their own opinions and then be a joint venture type thing.
Right, right. Sally, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I think, I think the issues that we run into most, as Ron said, is the LPOD. Especially when it comes to clearing or, you know, they're not technically supposed to clear under the LPOD. We do always tell them that they should look at the LPOD and that they should maintain the 35 foot buffer. As part of their projects, if that's something that looks like it's. Going to be a, an issue in the, in the, in the presentation. Because of course we think that that's a really good idea, having the 35 foot buffer. The other issue is driveways. If they have a particularly long driveway, it's often. It gets, well, not often, but sometimes it gets into a conflict. Because you don't feel that it fits in with your regulations, but we are looking at something different. And sometimes a long, particularly a long driveway. From our perspective would be better in one place, but maybe from your perspective would be better in another place. So that's an issue as well. And plantings, you know, what, what you require, what you require them not to do. We have two submissions down on the lake at the moment, which from our perspective are absolute nightmares. I don't, and we don't know what, what you said and. It's. They've been cleared to the lake. That's not supposed to happen. And the other question is. Probably when we have the separate site visits, that it would be helpful, I think, if we both kept an eye, sort of a semi eye. On what's going on because I think we have, this is. Property that mostly for property on the lake. To keep an eye on what is going on around us. So you can say, hey, we went to a site visit. And we're not sure that what's going on there is what ought to be.
You mean follow up?
Well, yeah, just, just, you know, more, more eyes mean less issues.
We, one, one thought I had that might address the communication and sharing. Issue that you've raised and I don't know how practical this is, but. You know, I've, I've always felt that it's been good in our planning board meetings to have. Patrick White. Join the meeting as an observer representing the select board. It's, there have been a number of times where it's been useful to have Patrick. Available and I think he learned something from the meetings and we, we often learn things from what he says. I see we have another. Select person with us tonight, Roxanne. So my thought is, what if we had a member of the planning board? Join your meetings and a member of the Concom join our meetings, not as.
That'd be excellent.
Not as a member, just as an observer, you, you know, we'd, we'd share minutes, of course. I, I agree. That's an excellent idea, but.
I think we do. Do I not send them, Jen? Yeah, I do. Yeah.
Yeah, and.
Yes, you do. Yep.
That's helpful, but I think if we could identify one of us on the planning board to. Commit to being at most, if not all of your meetings and vice versa, you get somebody to commit to being on ours. That, that might help. It might not eliminate, but it might help to. Diminish communication issues. Marie?
Could we also have site visits together? Would that make sense? You know, have one site visit with both of them?
Well, I was going to, I think it, it might. We operate, and I don't know about you, Ron and Sally. We've gotten legal advice. Which we, we want to push, push back on frankly. That. We're not supposed to ask questions at site visits because that's a form of deliberation. And if we're deliberating, we should only be doing so in an open public meeting. So we, in, on that advice, we're supposed to go to a site visit and stand around stupidly and listen to the.
Which is stupid, by the way.
Listen to the engineer talk to us and I think we can nod our heads. And blink, but essentially we can't do anything else. I mean, do you observe that, that restriction when you go on a site visit? We think it's nuts.
We break the rules.
Yeah, and I was talking with.
Good.
I think it was Brent. At, when we went to 82 Interlake and.
All right.
He was very kind and. Polite, but he implied that nobody else, no other town that he's involved with follows that. That restriction. I think it's a very narrow reading of the statute and we're going to push back with Donna Brewer. Our lawyer and see if we can't. Open it up a little because otherwise it's almost useless to go to a site visit if you can't talk.
I agree. I, I think for me in particular, the site visit is so much more informative than any other thing we do. I can sit and look at a plan. All day, but I, but looking at the plan doesn't tell me what's on the ground.
Yeah.
And when I get there and I say to Brent, because you're there, you get picked on. You know, what's that pipe that I see sticking out of the ground? Or I see erosion over there. We need to think about how we can fix that. You know, these are important topographical and landmark things. That we only see on a site visit. We had a site visit a couple of years ago where we found an endangered species plant. For example, um, you know, and these are things that we need to be able to talk to the applicant about.
But I think the idea, Marie's idea of a joint, of joint site visits, if we can coordinate them, actually makes a lot of sense. And it makes it easier for whoever is hosting the site visit, both the owner and, and people like Brent and others who. You know, lead us through site visits, they, you know, you kill two birds with one stone.
I think that with a seven member planning board and I'm not sure what the Concom, this is Kate Fletcher.
Evan.
Being with 14 people, I think you're, you're going to need to think about having at least two site visits. If you combine them.
That's a good idea, Kate. Maybe we could join each other's, you know, I was just thinking of the logistics of setting a site visit and Brent, maybe you have something to say about this. When, when an applicant comes in and. And, and we set a site visit at the meeting, that's probably the most convenient way for us to do it. But maybe what we should do is then. Send a note to the planning board saying, we're having our site visit for this project on such and such a day. Would any of you like to join us? And maybe you could do it the other way. Send us a note when you're having. Your site visit and maybe if somebody can't go to the one we've set for conservation, we could go to the one you set for. Planning board.
So Brent, I have a question for Brent. So Brent, when we have a site visit, that gets charged back to the homeowner, correct?
Correct.
So if we have two site visits, then they get charged twice. If we have one person or a couple of people who. Have to have a separate site visit, then they get charged three times, correct?
Correct. And, and to the, the point there, if there's an idea of. One of the nice things about when we submit an application is generally when we're making that submittal, we have an idea of when we. Expect we will be able to legally appear before the conservation and the planning board based on legal advertisement requirements, what have you. And I don't know if the, the commissioner or the planning board were to say certain dates, they might try and reserve for, for site visits. I know for my father. 20, 25 years ago, Saturday morning was a popular time for a site visit, but. If there was an idea of a time that generally worked for board members. When we submit an application, if we were to submit two or three suggested times for a site visit. And between the conservation commission and planning board, if you set two, obviously it's hard to get everyone on the same date, but. If, if both boards are working together and we can accommodate each board or a majority of each board. With, with two site visits versus three or four, like we had for unfortunately 22 interlaken. That would certainly make our, our lives more efficient and frankly, the more people who see and hear the same thing. At the same time, that really is my opportunity and Shannon for us to, to really show you what you see on black and white piece of paper. Here's the, here are the trees that are staying. Here's the topography. Here's, so we would be, we would welcome and happy to give any input that would help to streamline. Again, these applications, it's the same plans, the same considerations going to both boards. If there's a way that we could help to offer suggestion on a way to streamline that, we're happy to do so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And not to make things more, more difficult, but one provision in the Lake and Pond overlay. District bylaw that has never been. Never been done the entire eight and a half years I've been on the planning board is, is a section under its, the number is 6.5.7 procedure. And that, that specifies that the special permit application. Will be submitted to the board of selection for review and comment to the planning board and we have never done that.
And also on special permits, like the one the planning, the board of selection has a couple of weeks ago. I don't know if we were noticed in that permit and that's supposed to happen also. So all the boards and commissions. Involved with getting notices, special permits.
We get the, we get the notices of special permits, I know. And sometimes I'll, I'll put a, I'll sign it and say, we haven't seen this, just so that they know. And a lot of times it's just, it's something that we don't, we don't have any jurisdiction over.
Another issue that I would like to raise is the issue of putting conditions on a permit. And if the conservation commission has finished their review. Then it becomes awkward when we find a condition we want to put on the permit. And making sure that that doesn't conflict with the Tom Tom. And I think we had that. On a property on Lake Drive where there were some invasive species and our review was after yours and. We were trying to make sure that we didn't step on each other's toes, but I think. That those conditions are important to have in the permits and we need to make sure that we can. Incorporate them without creating hardships.
Okay. I think in the interest of time, I think we've covered some good ground here. In our minutes. We'll try to make sure there's a laundry list of these, of these suggestions. That we perhaps can build on at least some of them in the future and maybe we, we invite you back to another meeting. In the, in the near future to either narrow the list down and come to agreement on, on two or three things or all of them. And, and then begin implementation. To include if we're, if it requires some changes to bylaws, you know, preparing. Those changes for. You know, for presentation to the, to town meeting.
So I think there are some conflicts that, that if we looked at them side by side. What the Wetlands Protection Act says and what the town LPOD says. That that might be informative in terms of.
Yeah.
Seeing where there's a conflict or where we, where we need to sort of define better who gets, who, who talks about what.
Right. A good point. You know, we have this. We have the availability of a planner from the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission, who's doing some existing work for the planning board. As we speak, he's going to be in the meeting later. This might be something he could look at. We've talked about that in general, that the, that the bylaws need a kind of fresh look. To determine where, if any, there are conflicts and how to resolve. That may be something he could work, work on this, this year. Whether we can get that to a town meeting in May or not is. I don't know, but.
Maybe we could do an up to in terms of price, Bill? Like we, we can spend up to, I don't know, $10,000 or whatever to have this person do that work.
Well, he's already got, I mean, I, I hear you. We already have him working on several bylaws and we have. Others in, in the, in the queue for him to look at, including. Probably next up after sign and highway. Or parking. And driveway. An accessory dwelling unit by law, the creation of an accessory dwelling unit by law.
Oh, there's one. Hey, Ron, docks.
Or docks, yeah.
Yeah. That needs to go to the top of the list.
You don't know of any docks that are accessory dwelling units, do you?
Yeah.
Okay.
And how many you can have on one piece of property and how long they can be. We always tell applicants that, and Brent will attest to this. We always tell applicants that they need to conform with the bylaw for the docks.
Right.
But, but there really are some real gray areas. For instance, what if you put a floating dock out in the lake? What are the restrictions for that? As far as I know, there are none.
Yeah.
And that could come down to bite us.
Yep, yep, okay.
Sally, have you ever asked the Davids about that?
Ask who?
The Davids?
The Davids, I'm sorry.
DEP.
Oh, those Davids. Those Davids don't deal with that sort of thing.
So just they only deal with the docks off the shore? They don't deal with docks in the water?
I think there are some federal record, right, regulations that would apply in the Housatonic because it's a navigable. They're navigable bodies of the, of the whatever Commonwealth, not the Commonwealth. I don't know. I can't remember what they are, but anyway, they're navigable bodies. Of water and there are special, special designations for those. But I think in terms of the lake, I don't think that there is, there's nothing that I know of in the Wetlands Protection Act. That deals with offshore docks.
Well, the docks period, the docks fall under chapter 91.
Right, but that, but not floating docks. Years ago, when they first did the moratorium on, or the, not the moratorium, the. Oh God, you can't have three grandchildren in your house and have a brain. If, when they gave everybody a pass on, on getting fined for not having filed for their chapter 91. We were involved in the certification of one particular dock. And we were told that if it was floating, it was not subject to chapter 91. So I don't know whether that's changed. That's something we should probably look into. But theoretically, if that's true, if you have a floating dock, you can put a floating dock anywhere you want to on the lake within 200 feet of the shore.
Okay.
You were touching base with, with one of the Davids to find out whether there's any change there.
I have a memo from Ben Lynch at NAST DEP Waterways Regulations. And it's entitled Local Planning Board Responsibilities Regarding 91 General License Certification Certifications. And I can share that with everyone and it may be a place that we. Can start moving forward with understanding the process and maybe asking questions of Ben Lynch.
Right, because the Davids don't deal with chapter 91.
Right.
Generally.
The Waterways Division. And they actually even have a zoning enforcement officer, they say. So this could be an important resource.
That's great, Christine. If you can, if you have that digitally, will you send it on to us?
I will try.
Okay, thank you.
Good.
The, the Davids answered a number of my questions on the, on the dock situation in Beechwood. So.
Oh, yeah. I thought they dealt mostly with wetlands protection issues and not chapter 91.
No, they were taking comments and they said they had never gotten so many comments as they did for that situation.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think, I think we need to move on. Thank you, Sally. Thank you, Ron. We're going to, we're going to. Put this list together. We'll share it with you. It'll be in our minutes and. And then I think maybe at a subsequent meeting with you all, we can maybe either begin to refine it or agree on. Kind of the first couple of things we, we want to move forward with. Whatever those are, but it's a good, long list of things we can look at and I'm not sure we can do all of them, but we can certainly make a dent. In it and I think it'll be progress for both bodies and for the town.
Excellent. Thank you.
Jennifer, do you have a comment?
No.
No. Thank you both.
Okay, thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too.
My dog was just wondering where that dog was barking. That's my dog.
House.
That's my dog. There are always dogs.
Okay, the next item is, we're going to revert to. The original agenda and deal with the special permit for 82 Interlake and Road. Let me see, Wayne, can you do the honors, please? Were you there?
Done mute. Yes, I'd be happy to. Notice is hereby given that the Stockbridge Planning Board acting as special permit granting authority. Is scheduling a public hearing via remote meeting. See agenda to join for 6:30 PM on Tuesday, January 19th, 2021. To consider the application of David Brous at 82 Interlake and Road to construct a single family dwelling with an accessory structure under section 6.5. Of the Stockbridge zoning bylaws. The complete application and plans are on file in the planning board office and the town offices.
Thanks, Wayne.
You're welcome.
Brent, do you want to lead this off or Shannon, who, who wants to talk?
If I may, please.
Please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. For your record, my name is Brent White from White Engineering on behalf of the applicants. And joining us this evening are the applicants, David and Cheryl Brous of 82 Interlake and LLC, their attorney Lori Robbins. Architects Rich Holman and as well as Shannon Boomsma from our office. And Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I'd like to share my screen. And Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I like to share my screen to begin my presentation.
Please do so.
So the applicant is 82 Interlake and LLC, and they are currently under contract to purchase the subject property. From Bright Star Omega LLC, which is owned by the the Wolman family. Very brief background on this property is. This property was subdivided back in, I believe, it was 2003, creating Fox Lane, which is this cul-de-sac that you see here. And three parcels were ultimately created as a part of that division of land. The subject parcel that we are working on is where you see the pin here, which is 4.857 acres. And the existing cabin that is on the property is down where my cursor is. I'll zoom out a little further. Again, for your reference, obviously, to the east is Stockbridge Bowl. The access to the property is actually from a common driveway that the applicant currently has rights to. On our butter to the south, following my cursor, and that leads us out to Interlake and Road. Just go. Stop this share. Go to my next screen. Give me one second, please. Here we go. Can you all see that site plan?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Again, so for your reference, this is a much closer view of the the proposed work area. On the bottom of the sheet where my cursor is, is the access from the common driveway that leads to the subject parcel. The existing cottage that you saw. In the aerial view is right where my cursor is here. And the proposed house footprint, as well as the garage. And guesthouse are shown here in yellow. Where my cursor here is currently represents where the existing house and the proposed house will maintain a 78 foot setback. From Stockbridge Bowl. One of the items that we've worked closely on with feedback from the Conservation Commission and really. Studying the topography very closely with with the applicant. As well as their architect is to really work with the topography of the land to. Rotate the northern half of the house further away from from Stockbridge Bowl.
You do me a favor and zoom in a little bit on that.
I'm happy to, sure. Is that better?
Yes.
It is.
Okay, thank you. So one of the items that we worked on closely, obviously, we we've appeared before this board informally as well as with the Conservation Commission dating back to to October and. One of the items of concern was the original house layout was as well as the guesthouse, we're all. Fronting due east at that 78 foot setback and. Through our our design iterations here, we've done a number of things, as I mentioned, to. Take the guesthouse and set that back off of the 78 foot setback from Stockbridge Bowl. As well as take the the northern half of the house and rotate that. Counter clockwise, which really allowed less of the house to face directly on. On Stockbridge Bowl. One of the nice things that we saw during the site visit was. The grades that we're looking to maintain and for the the lake levels essentially where the existing cottages. So we're ultimately, we're going to be building the house into the. The hillside versus setting the house further back from the lake. At a much higher existing ground elevation and having the house much higher than the the level of Stockbridge Bowl itself. As I mentioned, the the purchase sale is for all three parcels that were shown on that subdivision. However, all of the improvements are on the 4.857 acre lots. And we have based all of our zoning tabulations based upon that. For instance, the the proposed house, the garage and the guesthouse. The entire lot coverage is 2.97% of the lot. And 10% is the maximum allowed for that. Within the Lake and Pond Overlay District, we're allowed to have a maximum coverage of 15%. And the application before you this evening calls for 13.2%. Well beneath of the maximum allowable. I mean, the finally, the the final zoning threshold that we're we're dealing with is with respect to the floor area as it compares to the overall lot coverage. And that allows for a maximum of 20% of the lot area. And the application before you this evening calls for 4.18%. So with respect to the underlying intensity regulations within the zoning by law, as well as the specific requirement for. Coverage within the Lake and Pond Overlay. This applications is beneath all the maximum allowable thresholds. As a part of this project, as I mentioned, we have been before and received an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission. And one of the benefits of this project is within the 100 foot buffer zone, we've we've got a very robust. Tree replanting plan. We consulted with Tom Ingersoll, a very reputable forester. Who had some great suggestions for us and ultimately what we've proposed. And our order of conditions based on is for every tree greater than four inches in diameter. Within the 100 foot setback, we will replace those trees at a two to one ratio. We have identified 32 trees which will come down and be replanted with with 64. The trees that are within the 35 foot setback, which is of of specific note within the Lake and Pond Overlay. Those are mostly does that disease and dying ash trees. So again, we're actually achieving. One of the goals of the Lake and Pond Overlay to remove both invasive species as well as dead diseased and and dying trees. One of the real benefits of this application, when we when we discuss screening and impacts to the landscape here. One of the things I'm very excited about is the the mature trees that are along the shoreline. The shoreline that you see today, aside from a few limbs on some white birches. The the tree line that you see along Stockbridge Bowl today will be there. At the conclusion of construction, which we feel not only helps preserve the habitat value of Stockbridge Bowl, but also maintains the scenic qualities of the property. The both the benefit of the the residents of Stockbridge as well as to the applicant themselves. To further enhance our landscaping, so to zoom out one section here. The areas that you see surrounded in green, those are rain gardens and those serve multiple functions for us. First and foremost, there are infiltration best management practice for. Manage all the stormwater runoff from the proposed roof areas as well as from the driveway. But they also really allow us to. Spread the water over the entire waterfront of the property. Rather than concentrating all the water to a single, single location here. As runoff is captured from the catch basins in the driveway and diverted to the north and south of the house. Ultimately, that water will be able to spread throughout those rain gardens. And be infiltrated back into the ground, but also really takes areas that are currently. Overgrown and unmaintained lawn and really provides much more natural vegetation. Within the rain gardens themselves, we are proposing 10 trees. With six shrubs and an additional 225 plugs, so diversity of vegetation. But much better vegetation than simply a maintained lawn. And finally, with respect to to landscaping here, we've identified that 13 dogwood stakes would be planted along the bank of Stockbridge Bowl. That will go out over the water, provide shade, which is beneficial to the habitat within Stockbridge Bowl. Briefly, as I mentioned, the the stormwater management, the rain garden is our main emphasis for for infiltration back into the ground. One of your performance standards is the we are not to increase the rate of runoff from the 100 year storm. And one of the benefits of the the rain garden configuration is. For a 24 hour event, that 100 year storm is 7.8 inches of runoff over a 24 hour period. And the static storage within the rain gardens, as they've been identified on the proposed plans. Can store 5.86 inches of water. So if these were. Pour concrete on the bottom of these rain gardens, we're still going to have three quarters of the the 100 year storm contained. Before we account for any infiltration within the bottom area or overflow. So we we certainly meet that performance standard. Exceeding really the the thresholds themselves and. I really helped to achieve one of the concerns with regards to the Wetlands Protection Act, the Lake and Pond Overlay District and the Stormwater Bylaw, which is to. As sites are developed, ensure that water is recharged back into the. Into the groundwater table. So the system allows us to do that. While enhancing the 35 foot natural buffer between the high water line of Stock. Stockbridge Bowl into the the property itself. One of the other improvements is along with the construction of the house and the guesthouse is a pool. On the southern portion of the property where you see my cursor here and. One of the benefits of that location is it's it's very functional. For the applicant to use, but it actually allows us to. Take advantage of a stand of evergreens that are between Stockbridge Bowl and this area. So from a visual standpoint. That will be will be well screened. The retaining wall system, we're proposing a an engineered block system will be used to to create the retaining wall between the driveway level. And the lake level there. And there's a number of different products available that will have a natural stone facade. Which were, we know will help to match the the natural stone. Facade that you'd have with the cut of the driveway on the the west side of the the developed area. So. That that's going to be a great, great system for us to use to quickly and efficiently retain that pool system. But also have it blend naturally into the. Into the landscape. One of the other highlights of the the pool itself that we wanted to brought to your attention is it will be a saltwater pool. And one of the benefits of a saltwater pool is it's not like a typical swimming pool where you would. Simply put chlorine tabs into it and and the water itself has a very strong chlorine residual that's. Not only irritating to your skin, but can also be detrimental to the environment. And the way the saltwater filtration works is that really there's. At the very chemical level is the disinfection that occurs. So the water that's actually in the pool. Is is basic, it's a pH of seven. To drink the water, I wouldn't necessarily recommend that, but the water itself is is clean enough. So if we did have intense rainfall and there was overflow of that water. There is no salination that's going to occur of the groundwater or or Stockbridge Bowl itself. So. We wanted to be clear that the type of pool that we're planning to do and that it will be a saltwater pool, which is much more environmentally friendly than. More typical chlorine pool. We just we had a discussion with regards to the Conservation Commission, a review of docks. Part of their approval of the order of condition was for the seasonal docks proposed on the property. As stated, all of the proposed buildings and subject of the special permit. Is the southernmost lot where the house will be located. And for that lot, we are proposing a a dock that will have posts into the lake as well as a swim float. As a part of the order of conditions, that serves as our local approval. To move forward for applying for a chapter 91 license. And we do identify swim floats as a part of our applications for chapter 91s. We have proposed other docks, permitted other docks, excuse me. On Stockbridge Bowl as well as other great ponds in Berkshire County that have had both a a seasonal dock. As well as a float. The second dock that we're proposing. Is technically on the the big and parcel just north of where the house will be. And that dock will be of a floating configuration. And it's important to note that all docks comply with the town of Stockbridge by law with respect to. Not extending into the lake greater than 25 feet. Or having an area greater than 200 square feet. And the guidance that we've received with regards to the the detached floats. Those be no greater than 50% of the area of the dock. So the the chapter 91 licenses that we received. Both on the bowl as well as other. Great ponds have shown that that swim flow and maintain that maximum coverage as it relates to the proposed dock itself.
So the swim float. Would would count as part of the 200 square feet?
It would not because it's not part, it's not a post mounted structure, same with the. The the floating, the floating dock section itself, since it's not attached to. The shoreline, that is not subject to your bylaw. Whether that's something you wish to discuss in the future, that would be potentially something that the the town may wish to. Provide clarity on, but under the chapter 91 Waterways License. That it does require a permit, but it is not deemed as a part of the dock structure itself. Your 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 zoning bylaw is actually more restrictive, but the DEP policy for residential structures. Is 300 square feet or less. So just by the town. Within your intensity regulations under section five of the zoning. Capping the the area at 200 square feet is actually more restrictive than. What the state would typically sign off on. So you've already got a great deal of control as a part of. Approving certainly new docks to to meet those requirements and the dock is proposed meet those.
I had a question about the driveway. So when we did our site visit, that driveway was like wicked steep and on an angle. How would all the heavy equipment needed to demolish the old? Home and put in the new home? They go down that steep slope driveway?
They will. And actually, one of the things that it's hard to see on this this view here is, but we actually, the the grade itself is is traversable and. As we build the the retaining wall for on the pool itself, we're actually going to be slightly raising the grade of the driveway. So. Construction vehicles will certainly be able to manage, they can manage as great as it is now for the purposes of. Of demolition. And then as the home is reconstructed, it will be slightly raised to give it a more gentle grade coming off of the. Common driveway towards the the proposed house.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
And then the last item, I'm going to close the screen and do one last. Stop that for a second, just open one last drawing, please.
I don't know if it's the wine that I drank or what.
Okay. So the last element I'd like the the show here is the the elevation of the house from the lakefront. I think that's certainly the. A greatest concern to the board here. And as we're looking at this, this is looking as if you're from Stockbridge Bowl, looking. From the east, looking due west. So on the the very left hand side of our screen, you see the guesthouse that is shown just to be set back from. From the main house that's at the on the waterfront itself. This is the area where the pool will be constructed and then. The area where I'm going back and forth with my cursor. This is really the only area of the house that's truly facing on the lake at the 78 foot setback. The remainder of the house, and you see it in this view here, but really, as well as in the view above. It really begins to 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 rotate. In this case, it's in the. The northwestern direction, counterclockwise. Again, so a majority of the mass of the house is actually getting further away from the 78 foot setback. As you go from the. Call it the center mass of the house going further to the north along. Stockbridge Bowl, we've chosen earthen tone materials that really help will blend in. To the hillside itself and with the the natural tree line that will remain along the. The shorefront here, really work to and try and fit the house into the. Into the property itself and maintain as much of our our natural vegetation. Really to the south, to the east, to the north and to the west and all in all four directions. And finally, I I know the board will will have your own deliberation once you've. Once you've closed the hearings with respect to findings, but I would just like to take a brief moment, if I may, Mr. Chairman, just to review. From our perspective, how this project complies with the with the findings that the board needs to make. And the first is that the product is in compliance with all provisions and requirements of this bylaw in harmony with its general intent and purpose. I briefly summarized everything that's in the the special permit application, but. The product meets all the performance standards as it relates to ensuring we don't have a greater opening. Along the 35 foot buffer area. We've maintained, we've actually improved the amount of natural vegetation within the 35 foot buffer. Met all the stormwater management infiltration and peak rate attenuation. Requirements and we've also ensured that there's no prohibited activities proposed. As a part of this application. It's going to take a structure that's in very, very poor structural condition, a septic system that's certainly within 100 feet. Of of Stockbridge Bowl and would likely not pass a title five inspection. And builds a brand new, energy efficient home. That has a state of the art septic system that moves the septic system outside of the. Not only the Lake and Pond Overlay District, but actually beyond the 200 foot setback. From Stockbridge Bowl, which is the limit of this Conservation Commission's jurisdiction. Is essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare of the proposed location. And this is a a single family home of. Use that's been this use, it will continue to remain in this use, but this house allows. The applicants who are currently lakefront owners in Mackinac Terrace neighborhood. This is going to allow them really to build their their dream home, multiple generations of their family will be able to. To enjoy this property in one centrally located part of the. Property itself, while really trying to preserve as much of the. We're really focusing our development within the previously already altered area on the property versus sprawl. So we think that's a real benefit to this. Will not be detrimental to adjacent uses or established or future character of the neighborhood. I would argue that this proposed construction actually helps to bring the property. To be more commensurate with the surrounding homes that have have all been. Built and renovated over the years and 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 great condition. So this will certainly help to do that. The fourth item might have be a will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impaired pedestrian safety. Again, this is a. Existing residential use and remain. So certainly not a a large traffic generator as compared to a commercial application. That you might review. And finally, that we will not overload any public water drainage or sewer system. Or any other municipal facility to such an extent that the proposed use. Of any existing use in the immediate area or another other area of the town. Will be unduly subjected to the hazards affecting public health, safety or general welfare. So again, this this property will be served by its own individual water supply. While we're not. Relying on the town water supply. We're going to have a brand new septic system outside the 200 foot setback from the lake. We we've, in my opinion, overdesigned the stormwater just to ensure. You know, we, when I when I graduated, all the designs we would base for stormwater management were based on the 24. Hour event and we would size detention ponds to hit that peak here hour between. Hours 11 and 13 and 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 make everything work. And what we found is is, you know, the the 100 year storm. We're not seeing the 24 hour event. Now we're seeing. 100 year storm, two hour event, which is, I believe, close to five inches of rain. And then northeast. So to a certain degree, we've really tried to ensure that the stormwater management system is. Is robust with redundancy to ensure that we not only protect the home and the property itself. But we improve the the water quality of Stockbridge Bowl while also ensuring that we are. Recharging the groundwater, even though we've expanded our. uh recharging the groundwater, even though we've expanded our our building footprint itself. I'm gonna uh just finally to reiterate, the tri-town health department has approved both the septic system design and the well placement. Uh the Natural Heritage and Dangerous Species Program has approved the project. Uh their jurisdiction was Stockbridge Bowl. In this case, reviewing the impacts of the seasonal box, and they had uh they had identified that this product will not result in a prohibited take uh which is our required finding uh for the Conservation Commission to close their public hearing, uh which they did last week while according to issue an order of conditions. I mean, with that, our team is available to answer any questions you might have. And I would just like to thank the board again for making time during the holidays to visit the property ahead of tonight's hearing.
Well, thank you. Does anyone on the planning board have a question or comment for Brent?
Brent, I have a question. This is Wayne Slasic. Uh Brent, just the back, the very direct directly in back of that house, what retains that bank is that house gets constructed?
The the nice thing about that is the on the on the east side of the driveway, the foundation wall will serve as the the as the true retaining wall itself. And one of the nice things is the 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 finished floor elevation that we've set for the first finished floor uh for the width of the driveway, we've got approximately a three-foot cut and fill where we're we're cutting into the hillside to make the driveway uh to extend behind the house. And we're gonna be able to take that material and use that to level out the driveway on the areas closest to the the foundation itself. And based on what we've observed on the site here, we're expecting on the the west side of that driveway, they actually have a a nice, beautiful, exposed stone um ledge face, which we think will will not only enhance the uh the character of the property, but uh blend nicely with the the design that Rich Holman's done for the uh for the property itself. We do have provisions. If for some reason that rock is not stable, uh we'd be able to use stabilizing fabric to to retain that. But uh we're expecting that that's actually gonna be a nice vertical uh ledge face and uh really be a an enhancement to the property.
All right, Brent, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um Brent, this is Kate Fletcher. Um question on the blasting. Um I don't see that in your schedule. Have you have you factored that into this scheduling? And have you been in touch with with the neighbors regarding that? Um I have some concerns in terms of impacts to neighboring foundations as well as impacts to the environment generally.
So what we 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 have had uh direct communication with uh both of our butters to the north and south who are on the call uh this evening, so they can certainly speak to that. As a part of the site preparation, I would assume that that the the blasting would be a part of that. Uh thankfully, that the blasting technology itself, as well as the setback that we have from our our neighboring properties, I'm very confident that we'll be able to to do that in a manner where uh we're not blasting the entire site at once. They do small charges over uh smaller areas. So we eventually will be able to create all the the level areas that we need into the hillside uh without be having a detrimental impact to uh to our property or uh or to theirs. And certainly, as we as we approach and then work our way through the construction schedule that was uh was laid out, obviously, uh especially with Mr. Kramer, since we're using his driveway for the construction. But uh for both neighbors, we plan to share with them as we approach filing for our construction documents and and breaking ground, just notifying them as a courtesy of when when they'll start to expect to hear construction vehicles. And we'd be happy to to more directly notify them as the time comes closer to um preparation for the blasting work.
I think you need to notify the entire lake. Last time there was blasting, it went on all summer and it was loud. We heard it across the lake. But anyway, um my next question has to do with the pool. Um it's, I see that that is within the one hundred foot minimum. Is that something that um you would consider your your clients would consider moving back outside of the LPOD?
Well, uh uh you well, that's the i- it's something we have considered. We spent a great deal of time thinking about that. And one of the one of the issues we we run into as a part of uh evaluating that circumstances uh where the pool is placed currently, we actually hide the pool frankly in into the hillside, south of the house, utilizing more of a of a natural screen itself. If we were to set the pool back even further, that would actually make the pool more visible frankly than than where it's proposed currently. Um and also i- i- from a function standpoint, it would certainly be less desirable than where it's shown. But I think what's more important is that how we can incorporate where the pool is shown into the landscape, overall landscape plan between uh the waterfront, the the retaining system, the retaining wall for the driveway um in the guest house. It really helps to keep things more consolidated. Um albeit having moved the guest house back from the um from the lake itself.
Okay, well, I I would prefer to see it outside of the LPOD. I'm not sure how the visibility um closer to the lake is better than having it further from the lake, but I'll I'll rest it there.
It's based on, well, it's it's based on elevation and it's based on the amount of area at the one hundred and fifty foot setback and beyond that. We actually need to level out even more. Uh right now, a- as you saw in the uh the rendering, if uh someone on the ball looking at the property, you see off to your far left, you'll see the 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 guest house set up at a higher elevation. And then really, you know seamlessly transitioned to where the existing houses is now. And we really had just cut that guest house out with the rest remaining ledge. Would actually have a significantly larger amount of material, frankly, to blast to create a separate flat area outside of the lake and pond overlay district, which I think gets away from uh again, our our intent to really kind of fit the house based on the existing topography with as minimal land disturbance as possible. I think we're actually gonna introduce even more uh by putting the pool in that location versus where we've proposed it.
But it seemed as if um farther up also too, there there was quite a bit of lawn, lawn area um that was fairly level and it looked to looks to me like that area wouldn't require blasting at all.
Which area are you referring to? I apologize, I'm not following.
You know, closer closer to one eighty-three. Somewhat some something like maybe halfway between the lake and eighty-three.
That thank you for clarifying that. You know, from 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 our standpoint in in terms of, and I know that the the board is looking at this as a part of an overall uh review of subdivision approvals going forward, but we've really done for for an eleven-acre for all intents and purposes, an eleven-acre site, we've really consolidated all of our our improvements and our land disturbance to really the tightest uh footprint that we can. And initially, we're actually would have had it even tighter, but um from the feedback that we received from the conservation.
Excuse me, we're talking about lot one, and you're saying that's eleven acres?
I I'm saying between the all the land that they're they're acquiring is we're trying to consolidate all the buildings and improvements down where the existing cabin is and where the new house will be. Uh rebuild.
We're looking at one one lot and that's lot one, is that correct?
The all the improvements subject to the special permit are on it's it's lot three technically, but yes, that 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 is.
I'm sorry, lot three. Yeah, it's the north northern lot is lot one. And then the next lots two, and then the southern lot is.
That's correct.
Right, I'm sorry. So then I just one more question I have about um. Look, I want to commend you on the plantings and rain gardens. There's a lot of really good work here. Um but I remain concerned about the the scope of the project. The size, it looks to me like um when you factor in the pool, what is that, twenty by forty, did you say? Twenty by forty feet?
That. That sounds correct. That's correct.
Okay, so when you factor in the pool and the the portion of the guest house that falls within the one hundred foot um one one hundred foot setback, it looks to me like you've got approximately approximately eight thousand eight hundred feet in in an impervious surfaces. And and seven thousand seven hundred and twenty-six of that are the house. Is that correct?
Uh that that is correct, and we have we have overdesigned our stormwater management system to to accommodate those those improvements.
Right. So I guess my concern is from the standpoint of of um consistency with the neighborhood. And we have had some very large projects go in. Um I was really on the fence about that project that you had across the lake by the causeway at four thousand square feet. Um to me, that just seems quite large for the size of that lot. Um I was on the fence about it, but you did move that back a hundred feet. Um the setbacks in increased on the side. Um I was on the fence on on that one, but since then I've heard from people. So this is my concern is with the scope of this project. Um I also wonder if if your clients would consider scaling this down to less than thirty-five hundred square feet. I mean, I look at the neighboring properties, one of them to the north is um is thirty-eight, three thousand eight hundred and ninety-eight square feet. And then one to the south is one thousand seven hundred and eighty square feet. Um you know, to put a little perspective on this, it was hard for me to find a property in Stockbridge that um met the scope of this, but the congregational church in Stockbridge is eight thousand three hundred and sixty-one feet. So that's, you know, smaller than what I come up come up with for this for this project. So I'm, you know, I guess I would ask if if you would consider scaling it down as well as moving that pool or dropping the pool altogether. Um I do appreciate the work you've done at um with the rain gardens and with the plantings. Um my concern is also for precedent with this pool. Um Stockbridge did sign on to the sus- sustainable Berkshire's plan at Berkshire Regional Planning Commission. And for me, this does not have anything to do with sustainability. And I'm gonna speak here for the for the next generation, and I'll I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Um if I may respond, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Sure. Well, I you know, and y- you referenced the product that be approved uh last summer here. And I I would say my my general response, and I've given this response many times, and I'll continue to do so, is every property is different. Um you know, when we we look at each what property has to offer, what we're trying to protect, what we're trying to preserve, and what flexibility we have from uh from design. Uh very early on, we did have a discussion. Let's let's move this house back to the hundred and fifty foot setback and keep it all outside the lake and pond overlay district. And I think what you would have is frankly a disservice to the lake for the fact that the the ground floor of that house would be setting up forty, fifty feet higher than the the lake. And I think really getting away from a lot of the visual concerns that you're you're expressing concern about. So um again, with regards to the the each project and each individual property, we really try and look at that and say, what is the best way that we can certainly achieve everything that the applicant wants to 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 do with the property, but do so in a way that is mindful of the um the the character of the neighborhood, respectful of the site, respectful of the uh of the environment itself. And we've really taken um, you know, six months here to really work and and refine that with with feedback from uh other boards and and speaking with our our neighbors, trying to get this as as uh the the best of a product as we can have that certainly meets all the, you know, is well beneath the the performance standards, you know, and it's from from our standpoint, from a design, you know, when we look at the lake and pond overlay district coverage and we look at the the lot coverage, you know, part of what makes this unique is the amount of landmass uh that we have. So that that necessarily compare a one-acre lot proposal for that site, uh which was frankly a gentler terrain, uh open, more open lawn compared to this. I I don't know is a is a fair comparison. Uh but I think again, we with what we were able to do to to maximize that site, I said, we've taken those same principles and really tried to emphasize in this case here that the siding of the house, rotation of the house to really, again, to to ensure that we don't have the entire frontage, the entire front mass of the house directly at the at the bowl itself. So uh through all those efforts, as well as again, really trying to to, you know, bring in the right folks to help us uh identify uh revegetation, uh you know, on the waterfront, within the rain gardens, things of that effect. Uh you know, the nice thing about the the lake and pond overlay district special permit with regards to the pool, with regards to landscaping is you have the opportunity to look at each property and each product individually and say, here's, you know, here's how the, you know, it meets the requirements. But here are things that we think that, you know, if if you were to say, you know, we think there's more trees that are more dog with stakes along the waterfront to improve the habitat of the water. You know, that's where I think the discussion of conditions and things of that effect uh comes into play more. But I I think in terms of the the comparison of of this project to other properties, I I I think, you know, we 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 as designers and applicants representatives rely on the bylaw and what those thresholds are. And and frankly, we worked to to keep the projects well underneath um those thresholds. I I admittedly, I've had special permits before you that ten percent national coverage and we're at nine point ninety. I I understand that. In this case, we really made an effort to to stay well underneath those, both from the the lot coverage.
I I I fully recognize everything you've done here. I think my question here is, is a smaller footprint something that you would consider?
Admittedly, that's a a question for for my client, and I would frankly prefer to have the ability to speak with them not in this format to um address that question.
Isn't that a purview of the uh select board, not the planning board? This side of the house.
That that uh that falls to the to the planning board and the select board, Nancy.
But.
If I might, Bill, if if I might, doesn't the a- all the thresholds are are held in check? I mean, we have bylaws in place and and maximums in place for a reason. I I know it gets close to what we're talking about as maximums. But they've met these conditions, and I I don't at this point have a problem with them doing what's proposed because frankly, I don't think it's our place to ask them to shrink the place down if they've stayed under the provision already.
Yeah, I I mean, they can choose to do so. But uh I don't see how we can demand that they shrink the size of the house uh because they're already in compliance with uh lot coverage.
So so character of the neighborhood is is part of the consideration here with the lake and pond overlay district?
I have some issues, particularly with the pond um or the swimming pool, as Kate has pointed out. I think that the artificial rock, the ready rock blocks that are being used are such an eyesore. And to add to that huge house, those many additional feet of an artificial stone, which I every time I see them, I think I'm coming through the Ted Williams Tunnel in Boston. And it's not what we want around the bowl, I don't think. So I'm having a lot of problems with that. I'm also concerned somewhat with the size of the home, the size of the septic system. Because the if you look at the home and we're seeing these houses turn into Airbnbs where every livable space is turned into a bedroom. We could have a huge issue with the septic system just serving six or seven bedrooms. So that concerns me. The number of trees, thirty-two trees being removed. These are trees that have so many environmental values, particularly as we're going into climate change and all of the professionals are saying, keep your trees, they're so valuable. And yes, you are planting little trees. You're going to plant more trees than were there. But by the time they are ready to really provide value, I I don't know how many years that is. I don't know what the lifespan of the trees you're trying to replace are. And I'm very, very concerned about that part of this site. I'm also um a little confused about if you're talking about, this is a four-point-three-five acre site, but it includes three lots. Is there going to be something in place so five years from now, who the people that are sitting in our seats are not looking at a subdivision that takes place on those other lots and another building that's being proposed? Is there a conservation easement or something that makes sure that there is no further development on the lot? And I agree with Kate about the size um and the neighborhood impact. Because I'm very concerned as to what the impact is on the bowl. When even though you're doing all of this good work and I salute you, I think you're a good engineer. But I'm just concerned that there are too many unknowns here. And the other thing is that I do not know how we could do some performance guarantees as a condition of a special permit that um would have the applicant guaranteeing certain things remain in place, like those trees that you're planting are there in eight years from now. And so they really are not just being planted, and then you get the permit stamped. And nobody has the ability to check on them. And then we see problems going forward. We understand this is a very good owner, a very responsible owner. We hope that they're going to be there and enjoy their home. And so you can sort of say, well, so do we really need a performance guarantee? But life is crazy right now, and there are no guarantees. And so if we have things in place, we can be sure the town is protected. And that's particularly a concern of mine with the saltwater pool. Because from what I have read and from what I understand from people who have them, they're there certainly are environmental issues connected with a saltwater pool. And um there, whether or not they're safer than chlorine is a matter of debate, depending on who you listen to. But there is concern about wildlife drinking saltwater and it can really ha- harm them. I know that it will be fenced in, but there are, you know, there's no guarantee. And I also read that a twenty thousand gallon pool with the current salt level that they recommend would um require five hundred and one pounds of salt. So that is a tremendous amount of salt if something happened. So I'm I'm very concerned about this project. I I think I have a lot of unknown questions. And I I know it's a great project, I know there's a lot of positives. But I think we also have to be careful as we weigh projects like this particular.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Um, a lot there, so give me, I'm gonna taste a little little bits here. First off, with respect to the the ready rock wall, uh the reason that we chose that, first and foremost, is I to reiterate about the pool itself. The pool has actually been situated in a way where it'd be probably the least visible element of the proposal itself. So by default, we've, that's one of the ways I think we we've we've certainly worked to to address your concern. Uh, ready rock is by no means the only manufacturer, and that's not to say that we may uh end up deciding to do a reinforced concrete wall with a stone, a stone facade. Admittedly, a landscape architect will help us refine more of the details um of the pool. So i- if I'm hearing the concern is as engineered block wall is is our our major concern or or to that effect. There's ways that can be that can be dealt with. It's a reliable product, one we've used with great success. And it helps move construction along here. And I think from what I've seen, um, yes, there are are some block patterns that have been used that are are uh very monolithic DOT type uh looking here. But there's also equally as number of of ones that I think will really be able to help match the frankly, the the exposed ledge that we we plan to uncover as a part of the um construction of the driveway. So I think to a certain degree, uh, the applicants have every every incentive to propose uh a block, a rock pattern that's actually going to be complimentary of everything else that they're building on this brand new house and and the the ledge that they're gonna have on the property. So uh frankly, they have as much, if not more of an incentive to to find a block pattern that is attractive as compared to those that you might see on the Mass Pike. Um, with regards to the 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 saltwater pool, again, I I consulted a landscape architect who designs these every day and uh gave me his assurances and and from the research I've done, um, I I would default first off that that the pool is still governed under the plumbing code. So as a as a part of a certificate of occupancy, uh the the pool, the operations of the pool are still subject to the the plumbing code and all all requirements that come along with that. So I think beyond a certificate of occupancy, there are still uh mechanisms in place. Should the operations of the pool not be consistent with what they should be, I think there's there's recourse there. Obviously, the 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 owners have every incentive to maintain the pool properly, protect uh materials that are required to supplement the uh the filtration system. So I I I agree, it's a, it's something that needs to be addressed. I don't think there's a concern. But I think frankly, the owners of have the the greatest incentive to ensure that pool is is properly maintained. Again, with respect to the 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 size of the house, I think we really have to go back to, again, the the size of the lot, the the actual thresholds that are within uh the the zoning bylaw in and of itself. So, you know, I I I understand the uh the concerns here and and frankly, the the applicants really wish to have a tasteful uh development of the property here. And we've we've tried to place and arrange the structures in a way that really minimizes uh that disruption while allowing us to maximize the amount of coverage and and screening that we have to our immediate uh butters to the north and uh and to the south and from from one eighty-three.
If I may, you know, I did consider the lot and the size of the lot on the site visit as well as the shape of the lot. And I would just make the comment that from the lake, and it's a public good, um, the frontage is is not that great. So the lot is very deep, it's very long, um, going from from east to west. But the frontage along the lake is not significant proportion to the rest of the rest of the property.
Correct. And and that's why I think we we've really taken the effort to take what initially was the the guest house, the pool and the entire uh arrangement of the house and garage, all facing due east at that seventy foot setback and really work to set the house back, the guest house, pardon me, on the south side and rotate the north side of the house and the garage to get it much further from the lake. So as you're looking at the lake, if you were to look at the plans that we first proposed uh back in October, you know, we we've reduced the amount of actual house fronting directly on the lake uh quite substantially. So I think that that's been an effort on our part to to address that very concern. Um, and finally, just with regards to the earlier comment about the trees, um, again, Tom Ingersoll, you know, a majority of the trees that are coming out are actually already dead or or dying. So I I would I would question the value of the of the trees that are coming out as compared to the benefit uh that will be be gained by the the overall planting plan, not just the the replacement trees, uh but the rain gardens. And finally, with regards to the the question with respect to uh oversight or or long term, obviously, you know, the the way this process will work is is hopefully, uh at the conclusion of this, you'll be willing to grant the special permit for the product as proposed. We'll go to the selectmen, they'll close on the property and commence commut- construction. A building permit will be issued, a certificate of occupancy will be issued, then the special permit will be released. However, the order of conditions, the order of conditions is not released on the property, not only till the house is built and you have your C of O, but until all the stormwater, all the grading, all the landscaping has been planted and established. It's quite likely that during the duration of the construction, just in order to ensure um that all the proposed vegetation is taking, uh it's very possible that the Conservation Commission may want to see uh before they issue their certificate of compliance, which releases the order from the property, they may want to see two or three growing seasons once the site construction is completed uh before they sign off. So that's uh to the earlier discussion of what what powers does the planning board have versus what the Conservation Commission has? I think maybe that's a an opportunity to say within within the order of conditions that they grant, that they they put a specific time period from the time of final planting, we schedule an inspection and then two growing seasons, they reevaluate and see. Because generally, if trees are gonna die, it's gonna be within that first two-year window. Um, I think that's an opportunity where I think frankly, the commission um would would be in a better position based on the way that the Wetlands Protection Act reads um to enforce that. Thirdly, the 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 actual, the Conservation Commission, they have jurisdiction up to two hundred feet uh from Stockbridge Bowl. So even going beyond the limits of the uh the lake and pond overlay district um from our site visit and their their approval of the projects, uh they agree that a majority of the trees that are coming down are indeed um dead, diseased or dying. And one of the other things that we've done um is will be a part of our our order of conditions when we receive that is prior to work commencing, they are required to inspect the site, inspect the self fence, uh self fence, pardon me, ensure that that is intact in place. So as work begins, we have a re- heavy rainfall, we know that will will be in place. And one of the things that we've done to address another concern, another product that the the planning board and the commission are concerned about is with respect to um marking the trees that are actually going to come down prior to their clearing. So there, uh from the date that that we we receive all of our approvals to the date that we break ground, there's a paper trail and documentation of all the trees that have been approved to be removed, the ones that have been flagged and documented. And then that we have the proper uh recount replanting, excuse me, at that two-to-one ratio within the buffer zone before we'll have a certificate of compliance um issued by the Conservation Commission. So I I again, we we've really taken an effort to, the trees that are coming down are already uh in 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 need of coming down, frankly. We certainly want to protect the the house that that will be constructed and we don't want to leave trees that will be um a hazard. We've designed the pool to uh again, be placed in an area where the trees that are gonna remain uh will provide that natural screen. And it it's really all those, all those elements in the design discussions and the site visits and the staking of the house and revisiting the placement of the house uh that we feel that what you, what we presented to you this evening really has tried to account for not only the benefit of the applicant, but the benefit of the bowl and those visual uh concerns while maintaining as much healthy natural vegetation and screening buffers to the lake and to our butters.
Um, any other questions or comments from the board? Can I invite comments from a butters and and others, uh or do I close the public hearing at this point? What's the protocol? Oh, I'm s- I'm sorry, Roxanne has raised her hand. Go ahead, Roxanne. You're muted.
Um, hi, Brent, I have some concerns about the saltwater pool. Could you run by us again? The discussion you had about how it is safer than a chlorine pool?
Yes, so a a typical chlorine pool, uh generally, the way that that is treated is you would take pure chlorine tabs, you would put it in the pool. And there would be, you know, and if if you've gone to certainly a public pool, uh you you can almost smell it when you're you're coming by because that's, there's a very strong chlorine residual that's directly in the water. Whereas the saltwater pool, really, it's at the very, very chemical, at the elemental level where the disinfection actually occurs. So in this case, the way the filtration works is the net result of the water that comes out is a is a neutral uh pH, it doesn't have that residual uh chlorine in it. So uh again, when there's overflow or things of that effect, the 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 water that is in the saltwater pool does not have the same uh as strong of a chlorine residual as your typical uh swimming pool itself. So that's, that's really how the, just the way that the the filtration and the the biochemistry of the breakdown of the salt to reduce that or um disinfect the water is really why that is a benefit as compared to a traditional uh chlorine pool.
Well, has the proximity of a saltwater pool been discussed with DEP or N H E S P in terms of the environmental impact?
We have submitted, yes. Uh, so with respect to the Natural Heritage Endangered Species Program, uh Stockbridge Bowl is listed as a priority habitat. Um, and as a result of that, uh their jurisdiction to review the project was only within the the limits of the priority habitat. In this, for this project specifically, the placement of the dock. So um in that regard, their only jurisdiction to weigh in uh was the was the lake itself. Uh, the Mass Department of Environmental Protection, when we file our notice of intent under the Wetlands Protection Act, uh they issue what's known as a file number, that is, our our local Western Region Circuit Rider uh reviews all the plans, the narrative is the same information that the Conservation Commission approved. I mean, one of the things that we submitted to the commission as a part of a review that was supplemental information related to uh to to the saltwater pool. And the DEP did review that prior to the Conservation Commission issuing an order of conditions. And that was it being within the buffer zone, the one hundred foot setback from Stockbridge Bowl, uh it was within their purview to weigh in or address a specific concern um about that, and they did not do so.
Okay, because I, there is not only the matter of, you know, if, let's say, there's a major storm and there is saltwater that comes from the pool and enters the environment, but there's also mist that comes off of the pool. And I think as Kate mentioned, um, it can be obviously bad for certainly pets, um, but other wildlife, if they should happen to come into contact with it, drink it, et cetera. Um, so I was just curious. Thank you for um clarifying.
You're welcome.
So are there any other questions from the planning board? Again, do I, help me, do I close this meeting and then invite public comments? Or do I invite public comments and then decide to close the meeting?
Public comments?
Yeah, I thought so. So I see the owner is here. Um, I see at least one a butter is here. Um, do any of you want to speak? Please raise your hand or put up a hand signal. Uh, Joan Cohen, you're first, please. You're muted.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Um, my first question, wait, hang on a second. I'm sorry, I dropped my notes. Uh, my first question is regarding the driveway. Um, where is the permanent driveway going to be?
I'll take that. So with with regards to uh discussions that we've had outside of 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 uh certainly this public hearing and the public hearing with the Conservation Commission, um, our our butter to the south, Mr. Kramer, who's also on the call, has expressed concerns with the long-term use of the common driveway that we currently have have rights to. As a part of the uh browser's closing on the property, we are seeking the special permit, uh utilizing the rights that we have under the easement in place to use that common driveway for both construction and and use of the home. And we have made a commitment uh to Mr. Kramer that upon closing on the property, that we would explore uh what, how would we possibly get a a new driveway off of our frontage down to the 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 proposed house site? And there's a few things that that need to be um kind of addressed that will, the more directly answer your question is, first and foremost, that driveway is actually gonna require a separate special permit process, uh separate aside from what we're going, we're having this evening with the lake and pond overlay district and what we'll have with the selectmen under the the pre-existing non-conformity uh within the, within the zoning bylaw, if a driveway is greater than five hundred feet or has a grade of greater than ten percent, uh that requires its own special permit um directly from the planning board. And one of the things that's most important about that, um, being able to get that special permit is is frankly, gonna be the the satisfaction of the um of the fire chief. So fro- from a design standpoint, there's a number of elements that we need to a a factor in based on our um topography that we have coming from Interlake and Road through our property. Uh, there's some wetland resource areas that initially the Conservation Commission had expressed some uh concern about, which I know you're you're very familiar with and would be uh a a detailed point of our of our design efforts, certainly. Uh, but frankly, part of of what, how that design takes shape uh will frankly be separate negotiations that we have with Mr. Kramer in terms of uh the long term, um, any any rights that we may continue to have um with that common driveway. Uh, more specifically, um, if a part of a way of releasing that easement for our uh everyday regular use of the driveway, once the house is built, um, if we are able to allow emergency vehicles to still utilize the common driveway as it is, that would allow me to frankly, um, design the driveway in a manner that I would have a tighter turning radius. I wouldn't have to worry about a a ladder truck ma- traversing this new driveway. Uh, so I I don't mean to be evasive with you, uh to answer your question, there's just a number of things that would need to be um certainly worked out with the fire chief and with Mr. Kramer before we could, uh we could do so, we would still be subject to a special permit. And what's also very important to understand, especially as it relates to the uh the closure of the property and the ability to commence con- uh construction uh within the bylaw under chapter six is if a property requiring a driveway that requires a special permit, that driveway must be permitted and constructed before a building permit may be issued for that property. So as you might imagine, there would be, uh, even if I, even if I had a a a plan done today, just going through the mechanism of a new special permit, that that would take some time, then you factor in the the time to construct it. So we, in order to 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 move this process along for everyone's interest, uh you know, frankly, the sooner we start construction, the sooner we finish construction and the less impact there is um on the neighborhood. Once we have a building permit, we can still work through uh the the elements of the driveway design while the house takes shape. Obviously, we'll factor that into what the final design uh will be. And I I imagine uh we'll have many discussions as that driveway plan takes shape uh before we would ever submit a special permit based on that. So uh it's well on our radar that that would be of great concern to you. How do we get from uh the cul-de-sac to the the proposed garage and the proposed house? So uh that, you have my commitment that that would be, you would be.
Okay, I I have other questions. Can I continue?
Go ahead.
Um, uh, the second was not so much a question as perhaps a warning. Uh, we deviated from our shared driveway for a short distance to put in um our own driveway when we built our house fifteen, seventeen years ago. And then our next door neighbor, uh Matt Winters, um, also had to blast more than we had. There was, in both cases, a lot more blasting that needed to be done than either of us had anticipated. So I don't think you should underestimate the uh the time, the money, the noise. I'm I'm not lodging a an objection because after all, we did it to our neighbors, but um I wouldn't minimize it. Uh, my my third uh question is, is there any more expansion or building planned for this property, including the subdivisions, than what we are seeing?
With regards to certainly anything within the li- within a- anything with regards to being within one hundred feet of a wetland, two hundred feet of of the stream or uh two hundred feet of Stockbridge Bowl, uh would require us to appear before the Conservation Commission and this board likely for anything within a hundred and fifty feet. We, again, we've really worked to design majority of what they want for the improvements within this uh this consolidated area. I would not be in a position to say there would never be anything on those other properties. Uh, if there was at a later date, we would still have to follow the same procedure, certainly at a minimum of filing a building permit. I know we still have a fair amount of of wetlands that are beside the cul-de-sac that would likely have a one hundred foot buffer zone requiring us to appear before the um uh the Conservation Commission before any any approval for that work would occur.
Okay, I asked that question because there is a subdivision that is a narrow strip that runs right alongside our property.
Yes, no, but we understand that.
About that.
Sure.
Uh, my next question is, uh, why are there two docks? Why is it necessary to have a dock on the north? Um, it's very close to our property line. I'm not aware of anyone else who has two docks. And they in fact could take their primary dock, and while they can't extend it further out into the lake. And while they can't extend it further out into the lake, if they have multiple boats, they can extend it out to the side. I mean, this, this is, yes, it's a big property, but it's really not all that much frontage on the lake to have two docks.
Frankly, the, the, the way that the, the waterfrontage is, is configured is the fact that there are two separate parcels allows us to, to, to seek the ability to, that they have those. Unfortunately, the way the town bylaw is written with regards to our square footage thresholds, unfortunately, there's no mechanism in place to, to receive that. And frankly, from experience, I actually applied for a variance to the zoning board of appeals for a dock on the opposite, on the east side of Stockbridge Bowl. For a dock that actually was still within the, the 200 square foot threshold, but we had asked for the dock to go out 37 feet because of how shallow the water was. And citing SBA studies, damage to my client's boats, potential environmental damage, the whole thing, the ZBA still felt that there wasn't enough of a hardship. So in this case, we're using the configuration of the property to our benefit for the fact of we do have two lots, we do have the ability to, to enjoy as much of the waterfront as we can. But the other thing that's important to note is that, that two lots, while it's, it, it provides a benefit for the fact that we could have a second dock. The detriment is the, the chapter 91 program, the Davids, as referred to David Fowless and David Cameron at DEP. They do review the chapter 91 licenses. And one of the things that they've held a hard line on is no longer allowing maybe 10 years ago when we applied for a chapter 91 license, if we wanted to encroach within the 25-foot side yard setback from an abutting property to a dock structure, that's part of the, the 91 regulations. We, if, if, if the abutters would agree, we could get a letter saying, we're, we're okay with the dock being within the 25 feet, so long as it's still on their property. Now, the, the, the DEP has held a, a, a firm stance to say, you wanted the 25-foot setback. And if your property doesn't have 50 feet of waterfront, you must have a single section dock going out, and that is it. So in this case here, based on the two parcels being there, we have to honor that 25-foot setback. We couldn't just build a larger dock accounting for the two lots or put it at that side property line. So it, it's really for those reasons that we, we propose the docks as we have.
Okay, I, I, I hear all of the regulations and conforming. But we're going to have two docks right by our property, one, one right by our property, which could have a bunch of boats, motor, motor vehicle.
Actually, no, so that dock, that dock is please.
Can I just finish? And I don't know if I have a legal leg to stand on. I know that that is a subdivided legal piece of property. But is there then going to be, you know, a lanai by the, by the dock? Is that dock going to be given to friends to use, to more their boats? I mean, there are a lot of things that, I'm, I'm not saying that there are bad intentions. I'm just say, I'm just saying that we have exposure. And regardless of the, the laws, I'm in a butter, butters are supposed to be at these meetings. And we, we have an issue with that. Not going to, you know, shut it down, shut it down. That's not why I'm here, but it's something we want to talk about. And the last question is, why does there have to be an asphalt path? An extra asphalt path leading out from the house and bending around and coming on the south side and then coming back? Is that really, are there going to be ATVs on that path?
No, so I'll, I'll take the last question first with regards to, that the pass, really, the, the goal was to provide both from the, on the south side, we're reusing essentially what is an old construction road as it is. So it just made sense. It's, you know, for lawn owners or for when the crew comes to do maintenance on the property, that's a viable path. We also wanted to have from the garage, the ability for, you know, golf cart or a little John, just, just for someone to be able to get from the upper level to not have to traverse the stairs from the upper level down to the lower level. So that's why we've created a path going from the garage down to, to the waterfront. That will be gravel, that it, it would not be allowed to be, be asphalt here. So that was the the intention for that. And I apologize for, for cutting off earlier here, the, the delay with Zoom. My apologies on that. But to, to address your concern with respect to the dock, that's actually one of the things that we factored in. And that's the reason that we've proposed that the floating dock would be on the north side. So that would really just be for sitting or swimming where the, the dock that I'll actually have the piers that would have boats park up against it is going to be the one that's closest to the house. So we, we tried to factor that in. So there were people swimming off that dock and, and sitting on that. But in terms of, of parking boats or things to that effect, that, that's not the intended use of, of that dock. And I also know under the chapter 91 program license, one of the, one of the things that they've become more strict about frankly is that concern of people turning their private property into into marinas, that this is a license for, for the browsers and their family to, to use. This does not allow them to become a public boat dock or for their friends to, to use the dock boat all, all summer. And just by virtue of that being the floating dock, you're not going to see boats parking on that constantly and hopefully alleviating your concern about.
Just wanna, if I may get in here. We've had this come up before with, with accessory structures. And I think the determination was that you can't have an accessory structure if there's no, no building on the lot. But I don't know, Jennifer, are you still here? Yeah.
That is a buildable lot, though.
Right, but there's no building on it.
True.
Came up over on
There's a cabin. Right, is the cabin still there? Oh, you're talking about the lot that's just gonna have a dock on it?
Yeah.
That's what you're, yeah. I don't know if you can do that. We've had.
That came up over on Lake Drive, remember? With the, with the property they wanted to put in the boardwalk?
Yeah.
Came up over there. That was yours, right?
I think, I think that there's, there's a clear difference between.
Can't do it until the house is built.
Well, there's a clear difference between that and I'm sorry, there's some delays here, but if I could interject, the, the difference between that situation and this is there is no building permit required for a dock or a floating dock, whereas the boardwalk itself was a structure requiring a building permit. So I think that's where, in this case, that would not be, would not be applicable.
I, I would check with, with the town hall because this came up over in the Beechwood area. And I, I would definitely check on that.
Patrick, you had your hand up?
Yes. If, if you're justifying the second dock, with the second lot that you own, the second lot accessory structure, we just had this over at Beechwood. This because it was a grandfather. The guy claimed the dock had been there for 10 years. You cannot put a dock associated with property in the building.
Did everybody hear that? I didn't.
Very, very difficult to hear, unfortunately.
You get real close to your microphone, Patrick.
I, I can translate if you want. Patrick, can you get closer to your microphone? Because people didn't hear you.
I can understand what the issue is, right?
Yeah, I'll, I'll translate for you. So basically, this came up over in Beechwood. We had a situation where there was, there were multiple docks and no structure, no property. And they claimed they were grandfathered in. So that was how that was handled. But the determination from town council was that no structure, then you couldn't have a dock.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the? Raise your hand, please, if you want to speak. Okay.
Can I just say something?
Yes. Go ahead.
Again. Because that dock is in the residential area and it's just recreational use. You have to go for a special permit. And it doesn't mean you're going to get it. That's all.
Well, and if I, if I could maybe just give some context overall here, as, as a part of this, this process is certainly we understand under the Wetlands Protection Act, we require an, an order of conditions or determination of applicability before we may apply for a chapter 91 license. We also understand under the chapter 91 regulations, we're required to notify the planning board of an application for a chapter 91 license to, to a certain degree. Regardless of, of, of where we are tonight, we still have steps that we need to take before we actually have a, a permission to put the put the floating dock in there. So I would just, just state that, that that is an ongoing process beyond the special permit hearing this evening.
Um, Bill, I think the owners had their hand up.
Uh, please, yes, go ahead.
Chairman and the planning board, David Brous, we're the applicant. We are not the owner yet. We are trying to go through this very, very lengthy process with, with many committees before we can acquire the land. So we know that, as Brent pointed out, that we can build our dream house. We've been on the bowl for 11 years on Mackinac Terrace. We built a, I think, a beautiful house there, full approvals from your committees. Gotten along very well with our neighbors. I went to camp at Mackinac. I've been literally been swimming in Stockbridge Bowl, kayaking, sailing on Stockbridge Bowl since 1980. I love the bowl. I absolutely pledge to keep it clean and you know, beautiful. And that goes a long way with what are we going to be building for ourselves, for our children and hopefully our grandchildren one day, is building a home that we can be proud of. That we can be very good neighbors with Joan and Bruce and with Earl. And we understand there's always issues that come up in terms of how you're going to build a house. And we pledge to work with both of our neighbors, all of our neighbors to make sure that we're working well with everybody and not creating a nuisance. This is going to be a beautiful house. There is not going to be much visibility of the house in terms of the rock wall and the impact of the pool that, that people in the committee have been talking about. It is our intent not to create any unsafe conditions, not to create any detriment to the environment and to really shelter the bowl from the, the house. You're not going to see much of the house. You're not going to see the pool at all. You're not going to see the rock wall. There's going to be significant block, a, a break between the, the bowl and the house. I kayak on the bowl most every month of the year. I don't want to see large houses in my view shed as I'm kayaking by. I totally agree with that. And that is our pledge. And that's what we've told Brent and our architect and our team to do. So we appreciate the time that you've given us tonight. We, we hope to move forward and be able to close in the land. And what's there right now is, is really a disgrace to what the bowl could be. And our pledge is to make this something that the bowl, everyone in this committee and everybody in Stockbridge, Massachusetts can be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to make a comment from the public? I'm looking, oh, Roxanne. Go ahead.
Um, hi. This question is for the potential owners, the applicants. I'm wondering, I'm concerned about the possible environmental impact of a saltwater pool. And I'm wondering if you've done any investigation into copper, silver with oxygenation instead of either chlorine or saltwater. And if you'd be willing to do a little bit of investigation about that, if there might be an even safer way to have a pool.
Sure. Saltwater pool came to our attention, using it a hot tub, using as a, as a pool, much safer and much better for the for the, the people, for the pets, for the environment than using a full chlorine pool, which, you know, leaves a horrible residue, a smell. And it's a real chemical that you're introducing to the environment. Salt is just NaCl. The Cl from the salt becomes the the chlorinating device for the pool. So it actually did seem to be very safe. But we're happy to look at copper. We're happy to look at any other additive that might make a, we, we've got three young children and a, and a, and a young dog. And it's definitely not our intention to, to create any harmful problems. Roxanne, it's a pleasure working with you on the SBA. And I pledge to you and to Patrick and to other people that I know on this committee that we're, we're only trying to do the right thing here. And we're happy to look into copper or any other product that might be out there.
Okay, that would be great. I just wanted to let you know, it is a beautiful design. It is a gorgeous house. And I do believe you're trying to be responsible. But that is one concern in terms of the environment. Salt is bad for the environment. It could be bad for plants. It could be bad for your rain garden. And, you know, if there were to be some kind of an incident where saltwater escaped that pool. So maybe we can talk about this off-line sometime.
Good.
Thank you.
That's great. Thank you.
Mr. Kramer.
Yes. I just want to say that I don't have any problem with the project. And I know that there was a comment about the size of the dwelling as compared to the houses abutting the property. But if you go down, down the lake more northerly from this lot, the, the, there have been some substantially large houses built there on the old Dino property, for example. And as long as, it seems to me, as long as this project is, is within the, the zoning requirements, the planning board's requirements, the conservation commission's requirements. I have no personal problem as a southern butter with the size and expansion of the project, frankly.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Hearing none, that's, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
No move. I move we close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Who was the second?
Kate.
Kate, thank you. So it's been moved and seconded to close. Jennifer, can you call the roll, please? I think you're muted.
Okay, we'll start again. Gary? Marie?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Nancy? Nancy?
Where is Nancy?
She left long ago.
Nancy seems to have dropped off. Well, it's six in favor. That's sufficient to close.
Okay, that's everybody.
The public hearing, thank you.
Right. Right.
So, does the board have any other questions or concerns? Do we want to talk about conditions or anything else before we you know, list the, the items?
I'm concerned.
Point 3.6, sorry.
I'm concerned with the number of issues that were raised tonight that should probably be in a final decision as conditions. I think that there are more than I can recite from my notes. And I am wondering if we should postpone the vote on this for two weeks and develop the conditions so that everyone is aware of exactly what we're voting on.
I think that there might be another issue which has to do with the driveway. If I heard correctly, my understanding was that the driveway arrangement was to use the driveway that we accessed to, to do the site visit. But Brent, I think, mentioned doing a separate driveway now. And I think that was the Concom's condition was that they use the driveway that we used.
And it would change a number of issues, I would think, if there is a new driveway on the property. And so that is something that I think has to go into our decision making.
Brent, go ahead. Did it? What's the story on this second driveway?
Well, just to be very clear, again, the, the, the permit application before you is what we're, we're asking for a vote on. And we would respectfully request the board consider deliberation of those conditions this evening. So we may move forward with the select board. I know the, the browsers and the seller are very anxious to to, to close. Just that the point of clarification is any new driveway configuration requires us to appear back before this board for a special permit under the, the driveway sections of the zoning regulation for a driveway greater than 500 feet. That driveway, not only will that require us to obtain a new special permit for that specific section of the zoning bylaw, that will likely require an amendment to our Lake and Pond Overlay District Special Permit to have that driveway end and meet our proposed house and garage configuration. That proposal would also require us to appear back before the Conservation Commission, since that driveway will certainly be within 100 feet of bordering vegetative wetlands throughout the property as well as being
throughout the property, as well as being within two hundred feet of Stockbridge Bowl. So again, there would be this board, the Conservation Commission, as as well as the fire chief, frankly, will have weigh in and and input similar to what you have this evening to set conditions or review the specific application. Again, based on if we are allowed to use emergency vehicles, uh, to using the existing common driveway post-construction, the proposed driveway will look differently, so.
Point of order, the the public hearing was closed.
It it's okay, I thought it was, we needed to clarify that there's.
My only point is that we would have to appear back before this.
There is no.
That's all I'm trying to say.
The plan as presented is to use the existing driveway.
Correct.
Is it appropriate to make a motion to continue this hearing for two weeks? And so we can because we have two consultants that are now waiting, it's eight twenty-one, and to develop a solid list of conditions, I think is going to take some time and some thought. And so I think we might want to put, we we've closed the public hearing, but we're not making the final decision.
Christine, if you'd like to make a motion, I I feel that there are a number of important issues that need to be, I think this is a good start, Brent, but I think there's work to be done here, and I would second a motion if you wanted to make one, Christine.
Make a motion that we continue the public discussion recognizing that the public hearing has been closed, but to continue the debate on conditions until the Planning Board meeting of February second.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Are we ready to vote on that? Marie?
Um, Christine talked about, or part of the motion is that there would be a list of the conditions, now is Jennifer going to put these conditions in kind of a list somewhere? How how do we go about doing this list of conditions if we don't talk to each other between now and February's meeting? I mean, what's different between now and then? How how do we go about making this list of conditions?
Well, it has to be, it has to be in the minutes.
So Jennifer will put it in the minutes, all we discuss tonight, and that's then we make.
I don't think there's, I don't think there's any other way to do it.
Okay, I mean, I don't know, I'm asking.
But our attorney may want to review our list of conditions to make sure they comply with the law. So I would say once Jennifer compiles them, they would go to our attorney, and then we can vote on.
Okay.
And the minutes.
We don't have to accept every condition that is in that final recommendation, but we.
Right.
Do that process.
Right, and the minutes are in draft form until we approve them, so.
Right, but just as long as something really gets done, you know, that we can really go forward and not just do this again next week.
What conditions have we agreed to?
We haven't, so that's the point.
How are we going to compile a list of conditions if we haven't discussed them?
We have, Wayne, the point is to put a list together so that we can discuss them.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, Gary, you're muted if you wanted to say something. Gary?
Yeah, I'm wondering if it would just be clear if we said we had a list of concerns.
Concerns, that's a good.
Then we turn them into conditions.
Okay, some of them, perhaps.
We don't know.
I accept your amendment, Gary, I think that makes sense.
Wayne, did you finish?
I guess, how are we going to be made aware of these concerns?
You're going to see a draft of the minutes from Jennifer before the next meeting. And then we will talk about them at the next meeting, which is the only way we can we can legally do so, I think, unless the lawyer tells us we can meet outside of a public meeting, which I highly doubt. We just have to, each of us look at those minutes, look at the concerns listed in the minutes, decide did, is any, has anything been left out? Do we want to add to them? And be ready to discuss them at the next meeting.
And are we allowed to condition this project even though it may fall within the proper scope?
Well, I think it depends on on which concerns we're talking about.
Okay.
I don't think we can, we can, for example, demand or condition approval uh, on the basis that they reduce the size of the building to thirty-five hundred square feet, because they're already in compliance with that element of the bylaw.
Okay.
But, you know, saltwater versus freshwater driveway, you know, the other things we've talked about are potentially things we can, we can consider as can, you know, change them from concerns to conditions.
Excuse me, it's a special permit, and the board has jurisdiction over the size of the project as well.
Okay, but if it well, let's there's a motion, there's a motion on the floor, it's been moved and seconded to continue the public hearing to the next meeting. And to, in advance of that meeting, each of us individually, in preparation for that next meeting, to review the minutes and think about what's in them or what's out of them, and that should be a topic for discussion when we talk about this at our next meeting. I think that's the motion, and that's the intent. Correct, Christine?
Well, have a list of concerns.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I said, a list of concerns, that will be in them, that will be in the minutes, that's the only way we can do it.
Yes.
Okay, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Jennifer? You're muted again.
Gary?
Yes.
Marie?
Hi. Hi.
Wayne?
Aye.
Nancy?
I think she's left.
Bill?
Aye.
Kate?
Hi.
Christine?
Hi.
Okay, that's all of you.
Well, thank you for your time, all of those who've spoken up, we're gonna work our way through this, one way or the other. I hope you believe that we're trying to do our best for the town and in accordance with with the bylaws, so we'll see you next time.
So in terms of the list, Bill, Jen can send it to us, and we can respond individually, or to be on the really safe side, she can send it to us individually, and we can respond individually. That's another possibility.
That gets a little messy. And puts a big burden on Jennifer.
That's true, yeah, no, you're.
I think we're better off talking about it at the next meeting.
No, I agree.
Okay. Thank you all, we're going to move on to the next agenda item. Christine, I ask you.
We have both Jeff Lacy and Phil on the line.
Right.
And I know that they both have I'm wondering, Phil, would you be terribly upset if if we put Jeff on first, because some of what he says may play into some of the work that you're doing, is that okay with you?
That's okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Phil. Jeff, you're still with us?
Yeah.
Welcome, it's good to see you again, thank you for joining us. What would you like to update us on?
Well, since the contract was signed, I dug in.
Which, by the way, I'm sorry, if I may stop you right there. The contract has been signed, and we'll make sure that you all get a copy, all the board gets a copy. And I don't know whether we have to post the contract publicly, but it's very straightforward, but anybody who's interested, we can send a copy of the contract too, so, yes, it has been signed, I'm sorry to interrupt, Jeff.
I sent the contract out this afternoon.
Oh, okay, good, good.
Okay. Anyway, since then, I've reviewed some of Joel's work, reviewed the the diagnostic report that he did on your town's zoning bylaws and some of the local issues and concerns that he revealed in there. That was good information. And also took a bit of a look at the the two bylaws that I believe one was specifically a cottage era bylaw that he had written to replace the one that you have on the books right now, I think. And the other one was sort of, I think it was, its title was Open Space and Historic Preservation Bylaw. So I I believe that's, that's as far as Joel got. He did all his interviews, he wrote his diagnostic report, he produced these two bylaws with lots of comments. Am I correct that that's, that's the end of of what is available from Joel? Or was there?
There, I don't think there's anything else.
Okay. So I've been thinking a little bit about my my approach and I I need to dig in and start and start writing and producing something that that you guys can can latch on to. You know, rather than just talking about what Joel did in the past, or what other place, other towns have done here and there. You you need something that that looks to be responsive to Stockbridge's needs, so what I thought I would do is is take an NRPC OSRD type model. I have one in mind from Franklin County that that looks pretty good, I drafted it as a consultant for that town six years ago. That looks like a pretty good place to start, I know I put a lot of work into that one, and it passed. It it got almost a one hundred percent passage rate, I think there was one person who voted against at the town meeting, and that person votes against everything, so might as well have been unanimous, so it was, it was well well-regarded in that town, and it passed easily. But then then look for ways to to incorporate the cottage era estate development option by special permit within that NRPC framework. So NRPC by itself, if you're going to propose a subdivision in Stockbridge, you know, out on the farm field someplace or open land, NRPC is the zoning that will that will attach to that subdivision, and it'll take it from being a sprawl subdivision into being a very compact one with lots of preserved open space, that's what NRPC does. But the NRPC could also be used when someone is interested in cottage era development, and I I imagine that most of these places have pretty good amount of land around them, so NRPC would would work well. And what the what the applicant could get is is flexibility on uses, densities, dimensions, design, and access options. And that substantial open space protection on the parcel, parcel is not immediately associated with the estate. And what the developer and and the town would get would be some business development, tax revenue that goes along with that, local jobs, and hopefully some historic preservation of many of those features that are on those, on those estates that would become part of the new whatever it was going to be. And set this all up so that it'll, it'll, it'll do two things, it'll it'll manage residential subdivision development, which is what NRPC mostly does, and it will be a place to go for a landowner that wishes to do a cottage era development, and at the same time preserve a lot of land in perpetuity. So, that's my thinking on on how to get started on this. And I would, I would in the cottage era realm, I would borrow from your existing bylaw, if anything good in there, bylaw that Joel wrote, and maybe even look at the open space and historic pres bylaw that that he also wrote. And I would, I would borrow as much as I could from there, because good deal of your budget already went for that effort, so might as well try to make use of it. So that's where I'm at. Ready to start drafting for you.
Good.
And I I I guess my my regular contacts are 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 Bill and Nancy and Christine, who I could perhaps between these these meetings be bouncing ideas off of, sharing, sharing drafts and things like that. Just so that I'm not working by myself for for two week periods without knowing whether what I'm doing.
Yeah, I think as a practical matter, that works, we we've committed, and and I recommit again, to sharing with the full board, you know, what you produce once it's ready to to be distributed, you know, once you've completed a a draft. We will share it with the full board, but I don't see how practically getting all seven of us involved in you know, answering specific questions makes any sense, the the full board will have every opportunity to question what's in it, question what's not in it, and you know, raise issues as as everybody sees fit. So I'm glad to hear you're going to start drafting, are there any questions for Jeff while he's while he's with us?
Jeff, Wayne here. Question on, do you feel as you look at these two different uses like open space development for a housing project, and then as you look at the cottage estate bylaw that could involve significant different businesses, hotel, condominium areas, restaurant, possibly some shops, possibly some other different, does, does the overlay of what you're proposing water down, for lack of a better term, what might be more specifically a cottage estate bylaw? And and should, should it be separate, or how is it that the same bylaw would work on both sets of things?
I don't know yet, I haven't drafted one of these. I I I've drafted lots of NRPCs with different types of of requests to include this, or we'd like to have bonuses, encourage this and that. I I haven't done this yet. I'm not sure anybody has. And maybe maybe trying to do both in the same bylaw would result in an overly long piece of work, usually the NRPCs go about nine or ten pages. Doubling that by adding a cottage era might not be a good idea. It might I can try it and just see how much, how much cottage era detail we have to pack in there to have it be workable. But I may conclude after a few weeks that 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 we need separate. Or even if we have separate bylaws, we could still link them in in some way, link some aspects of NRPC, build some aspects of NRPC. we could still link them in, in, in some way. Link some aspects of NRPC, build some aspects of NRPC into the cottage era. But make it make it a small part of the cottage era. So I mean, I, I ideally cottage era should be a small part of NRPC. And NRPC should be a small part of cottage era. That may only be possible in two bylaws. I don't know yet.
Okay. The reason I ask is because I, I think back to the initial reason that we started down this road in this, this discussion was the, the 37 Interlake Inn property. And as part of what we concluded at, at that town meeting was that we were going to focus on the cottage era estate bylaw to see how we might tweak it or change it or pass, if it was even needed. And then as we went down that road, somehow this discussion got into an open space bylaw and migrated into a much broader review of our bylaws in general. And I, I just feel like we've gotten away from the focus of what started the whole discussion in the first place.
Well. Yeah, I, I was hired principally to, to, to do an OSRD NRPC type bylaw, very similar concepts.
Right.
But for the amount of money that you folks have spent already, I guess it's around 25,000 and then another 12, so 37,000. If, if, if you can't get two bylaws out of 37,000 bucks, something wrong. So
I'm glad to hear you say that. I'm embarrassed with the amount of money we're spending. I seemingly haven't gotten very far.
Yeah. So I, I would love to take care of
Jeff, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I just want to weigh in on the spending. So just to clarify what, what was spent was Joel did the diagnostic and his draft bylaws. And that came to $25,000. I don't know where the other 12,000 that wasn't part of Joel's work. Okay.
Let's not get bogged down in costs right now.
Yeah. I, I, I'd like to see you take care of both issues at the end of this project if possible. If that's what you want to do.
Well, we want a bylaw that's workable and speaking personally, I'd like to see one bylaw, not two, but if it needs to be two, I guess we, we have to do two. But maybe that's a conversation for when you've made some progress on a draft, Jeff, and you see what stumbling blocks you're, you're running up against. Are there any other questions or comments for, for Jeff before we let him go? Okay, Jeff, thank you very much. I'm sure we'll be talking.
Oh, Bill, I'm sorry. I got distracted here. I just had one question for Jeff. Jeff, would you be able to provide planning board members with the name of, of the town, maybe in Franklin County where, where you drafted the bylaw and where it's been implemented?
Sure, it's Lyden.
I'm sorry?
It, it's the town of Lyden.
Lyden? Okay.
Lyden, yeah. I did that in 2014.
2014. Are there other towns that you would recommend or other projects that, examples that you would recommend for anyone interested in taking a look?
Oh, I've, I've gotten them. I've, I've worked on them in, in Brewster, Mass. On the Cape, it passed there. Chutesbury, of course. My town was the first and we've done, we've done two projects already under NRPC.
Okay.
Wendell. I did the bylaws there and there, there's a large 120 acre project now going through the permitting process in Wendell. I did one once in New Salem. That one.
I'm sorry, Salem?
Uh, New Salem.
New Salem, okay.
New Salem. I don't know if they used, I don't think so. Also did one in Petersham. Let me think of any others.
That's good.
And all those, all those places have, have actually implemented them?
Well, they, they've adopted them and I, I, I don't know to what degree they've implemented them. The way they were all set up is if a residential subdivision were to be applied for, the NRPC zoning would attach to those projects and they'd have to follow the NRPC zoning. So it's, it's, it's not set up as a, as an option. It's basically mandatory. It's the way they all pass.
Anita, you have your hand up still? You're muted. Hello?
Okay. Hi, Bill?
Yes.
Anita, Anita Scherner, thank you. Um, I was just, I wanted to thank Wayne for reviewing how we got where we are right now about the cottage era bylaw. And in looking at last year's minutes, in February of last year, we were talking about how to identify what properties would be considered part of these historic preservation, not necessarily cottage age or gilded age. Whether we would identify specific properties or whether it would be identified by the size of the property. And we also discussed possibly having input from the Historic Preservation Commission Committee as to which properties should qualify. And so just thank you, Wayne.
You're welcome.
And I hope that Jeff will actually look into whether or not we even need a cottage estate bylaw or historic preservation. And, you know, decide how or recommend how we should choose which properties this would apply to. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Jeff, thanks for joining us this evening. We'll talk to you again soon.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll have something for you next time, I believe.
Good.
And, and I'll, I'll feel free to reach out to, to you, Nancy and Christine to bounce ideas off you in the interim.
That's fine. That's fine.
Okay.
We look forward to it. Thank you.
All righty. Good night, everyone.
Good night. Phil, sorry to keep you waiting for so long, but you've done a lot of good work and we don't want to, don't want to let it slip. So please go ahead. You're muted, by the way.
All right.
Okay.
Yeah. So I know it's late, so I'll try to get through this as, as quickly as I can. I figured that I would start with the driveway bylaw. We haven't talked about that in a little while, but um, since we last discussed it, I haven't heard any more feedback or suggestions for revisions and it satisfies all the concerns that your building inspector had, who was, to my knowledge, the one who suggested amending this bylaw in the first place. So I'm wondering if it's okay with the board, if this is ready to move forward with the adoption process. On my end, I can, I can write a cover page like I've done with the other ones, which explain what we're doing and changes that have been made, just to make it a little bit neater. But um, I think the content is where it needs to be.
I think the cover page, I found the cover page of your other two bylaws very helpful. And I think it would be good to have one for this as well.
Okay, we'll do it.
If, if you could produce that and, and then maybe we can address that and, and perhaps the other two, if not tonight, tomorrow, at the next meeting.
Sure. Okay.
That would be good. So do you want to talk about sign or parking?
So move on to signs. I can share my screen if you find that helpful, or I don't know if everybody has the documents in front of them. It's up to you.
Please share it.
That's driveway. Everyone see that?
Yep.
Okay. So pending the discussion that we had last time, some of the language has just been cleaned up a little bit, but as far as content and actual regulation, nothing has been changed since the last draft. This one's just a little bit more refined than the last one you saw. It has the cover page, of course, which explains why these amendments are being proposed in the first place. And I think the most notable takeaway was yes, on this page. So really the, the suggested amendment was to give a little bit more leniency to some establishments that may have some unique architectural features. In the initial drafts of that, I felt that it was a little bit too loose because the way it was written didn't provide any sort of regulation for the area. It said that, you know, for example, if you have an archway that was conducive to locating a sign that, that wouldn't count towards the total number or area. And I felt that that was, you know, that size could be massive and then it would be totally unregulated. So as it's written now, you know, there's a little bit more leniency as far as the number that would be allowed, but it would still have to comply to that aggregate square footage of 30 square feet. Or for multiple establishments in a building, there would be 16 square feet.
I like that change. Phil, I'm just wondering if in the actual bylaw, your memos, your comments, can somehow or another, your clarifying comments, can those be incorporated into the bylaw as notes? Is that possible? I know that when I was talking to Nat Carnes about our bylaw, he said that you can do things like to clarify bylaws, you can do things like drawings, line drawings and so on. And I can't remember if he said you can also have sort of notes. So what's your comment on that?
I would have to touch base with Nat about that. In most of, well, in pretty much all the bylaws I've seen, I haven't seen notes that would resemble the drafts that you have in front of you right now. I think ideally the language is very succinct and should speak for itself. And ideally when, when it warrant having a comment to explain it, but um, I can definitely speak with Nat about it just because now I'm curious of that format.
Maybe the footnotes at the bottom or at the end of the chapter on whatever the, the issue was, put notes and then put it in there if there was a need.
I think he's saying that, that he hasn't seen that done. Have you? Is, is that permissible, Phil?
No, he's saying he's going to check on it.
Yeah, I haven't seen it done. Both are correct. I haven't seen it done and I will try to get in touch with Nat.
Okay. I mean, as a, as a kind of convenience for the planning board, we can all make copies of this, of these, these really helpful commentaries from Phil and put them in our, in our, you know, zoning bylaw books. So that when somebody asks us, what does that mean? We've got Phil's notes to explain it if we can't remember what it was meant to mean. Although I agree, the language is pretty clear, but there's no, nothing that says we can't keep these and use them as, you know, reminders of what certain sections, explaining why, the, the substance of certain sections.
And for the final submission, I can submit both. So you know, you'll have a marked up copy like this and a clean version as well.
Yeah.
If that's helpful.
Yeah. I should mention, although it's mentioned here by Phil in some of his side notes, that I did run by the idea of having the planning board become the issuing agency, the, the governing agency for signs. I ran it by all three of the selectmen and all three were very enthusiastic about letting the planning board deal with this. In fact, Chuck told me that I'd like to sit down with the planning board and find out whether we can shift other zoning bylaw type stuff over to the planning board and away from the select board. So we are doing this in contrast to the comment in Carol Owen's most recent piece. We didn't do this unilaterally. I did it after consulting with all three of the select board members.
No, just a that's okay.
Go ahead.
This is a point of, you know, clarity, clarification. I can't speak for the select board and neither can the other two. Even if we're all in agreement, we kind of still need to act under our authority, which is in a public meeting, with public discussion before we make a statement that we've given our approval as a board. You know, the way the language is written, it says, um, you know, that that the board took an action and I'm just pointing out the board hasn't done that.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying that. I trust that you will at, at some future point.
Patrick, also, so you know that we are holding these public hearing slash discussions on the bylaws. Hopefully tonight or at our next meeting, the planning board will move to send these proposed bylaws to the Board of Selectmen. You then look at them and under the chapter 48, section five that we have to follow, you then will send them back to the planning board. We then have the public hearing again for people to comment on them. And finally, at the end of the public hearing, the planning board will make a recommendation, if they choose, they don't have to, on whether to accept or not accept these bylaws. And at that point, they go to the town meeting. They're on the warrant and then they'll go through the process of town meeting and needing to get a two thirds vote before they're approved. And then if we followed everything correctly, they go to the attorney general and after they've gotten to the attorney general's office, she reviews them. And if they're approved by the attorney general, they come back, they're enacted at the local level and they finally get on the books. So there's a lot of opportunity for input. So
The governor just signed that, that, that law that dropped the approval of 50%, not two thirds.
On certain issues. And I'm not for sure if this was going to fit in that category or not, but you know, it's exciting that they're moving forward with some of those amendments. We have to see if the town is going to want to adopt them.
Good. So Phil, back to you. Any, anything more on the sign bylaw?
I mean, the only thing I would say for signs and for driveways, actually, if the planning board is satisfied with the language as written, then, you know, this came up in the email earlier with town council that if, whether or not a motion should be made, that these two are ready for the next step.
Yeah, we've talked about signs. Does anybody have issues with the, with the parking?
Parking's gonna be a different one. Yeah.
I mean, not, not parking.
Driveways.
So I have with the driveway.
Driveways.
Yeah, with driveways, I have issue is probably too strong, but when we send it to the select board, I would just like to note my concern that for people who are looking to, you know, for people, it seems like the two, the two car driveway requirement with a variance for someone who would have a one car driveway, seems like it's potentially an equity thing because somebody with a smaller parcel, less land is now required to pay $500 to get a variance. So I would just like to make that comment. And since Roxanne and Patrick are here, they, they're both hearing it. So that's great. That's my comment. That's a concern for me.
Thanks, Kate. Thanks, Kate. Duly noted.
So
Sorry, I had my mute, my mute, my mute on Bill, but I, Roxanne. Sorry, I had my mute, my mute, my mute on, Bill, but I, Roxanne, do you understand what I'm saying? That it's potentially someone with less money, less land is now required to go through this process?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think that may be a legal question because you know, there are aspects of these bylaws that are, relate differently to different kinds of different. I'm not sure there's an equity issue here, but I take your point, Kate. And you know, if the select board wants to weigh in on this, that's fine.
The comment, you know, because we don't really know how many properties in town that would apply to. So you know, that's, that was my concern.
Yeah. Are we ready to refer these to the select board?
Bill, I have a question.
Gary.
This is for Phil.
Go ahead.
Phil, on the, on the sign bylaw, how do you address the, not lathering, but symbols if they're in the windows?
I'm not sure I know what you mean by symbols.
Well, I can give you a hard example. The, the business that kind of started this whole sign piece, I notice now that above the business in a different, in a, on the next floor, there's cows in the window.
That should be covered under this already. So if there's something on a window like that, that would be considered a window decal. Let me try to look it up real quick.
Because we, I mean, it's, we've gone to the second floor now.
And if there were a third, they'd probably go to the third floor, too.
Well, I'm, I, I have some wonder whether that wouldn't be the case.
Yeah.
Is that decal or decal?
I mean, it should still be regulated under this, you know, that would still apply towards the total number. Sorry.
The coverage number.
Correct. So it would be, not just the total number, but for windows, if I recall, the way it was written was that a sign on a window can't be over 15% of the area of that window.
But what about multiple windows?
It would still, to my knowledge, have to have three signs for the business. The only exemption for that number would be if there is some odd architectural feature.
Yeah. So in other words, you would consider a cow a sign?
Well, now that the planning board is going to be the granting authority.
This is why we get in the weeds, you know?
And why cows instead of lambs?
And you know, honestly, it might be a lamb. I just saw it from a distance. I shouldn't, I shouldn't say anything bad about cows. It could have actually been a lamb. I don't mean to disparage any animal.
There are no animals on, at this meeting, so not to worry.
I think this board is getting punchy.
Yeah, I think we, we should begin to try to wrap this up.
I think Gary has a point. I think Gary has a point. I think this is where we have problems is when we're not quite sure what we're supposed to do. I mean, is that considered more decals than she should have?
It's, it's, these are each side, what Phil's saying, and I think the language of the bylaw says, each of those is a sign.
Aggregate window coverage of 15% shall not be considered when calculating the number or area of the sign permitted. So it's too much, is what you're saying. It's an extra sign that shouldn't be there.
Arguably. Well, I haven't seen the decals. I don't know how big they are.
This is where we struggle.
Are we struggling?
Well, I don't know. Are we deciding this is too much for her?
Well, I mean, I'm not saying any particular person, but I'm, what I'm, what I'm suggesting is, is that this is exactly the, where we get into the weeds with these sign permits.
Is the second floor part of her business or is it leased or owned by someone else?
I couldn't tell you. I just know that I saw him for the first time this week. They could have been there longer. I don't know.
Gary, I haven't seen these. You're talking, this is on second floor windows that you saw these? Really? Because I do not believe that that is part of her business, so.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I don't, I don't think it is either, but it appears that it's being utilized as a sign.
Yeah, that's Pam Sandler. So, but it, you know, it raises this other question. I think if it's a separate business, that's one thing. If it's not part of your business, that's another thing. And once we're out of COVID, you guys can be in charge and you can bring down the hammer.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not looking to do anything other than raise the question so that the sign bylaw is more workable than the one that we have.
Yeah, exactly.
More understandable.
Yeah, I get you.
So, so I think we're talking about something we don't know enough about, which is, are those signs, those decals controlled or owned by, in space, owned by the proprietor of the business below? If they're not, then that it's not her concern and not our concern with respect to that person, that business.
Yeah, well, I guess I'm, I'm dealing more in the abstract and then we're, then in turn, we're talking about the reality of it. But I guess I would just say that I can't imagine that Pam Sandler would have, as an architect, would necessarily be promoting animals in her window. So, so I'm saying.
Yeah.
We have to think about something that looks at the sign being connected to the business on whose window it is attached so that we don't have this. Because I can see in the future, we could open up a can of worms with.
Well, since it's late, why don't, why doesn't everybody that, just take a look at, at the Minkler's building and we can talk about it next week or whatever. But it's just an example of what you'd have to work through with the sign bylaw. That's all I'm saying.
So are we going to continue this hearing until next, or two weeks from now? At this point, till we, it's just until we understand this particular issue?
Yeah, I would agree with that. It's Kate. I think Gary makes a very good point.
So I made a motion to continue for two weeks?
Second.
Before we vote, we, before we go to a vote on that, what, we'll all go look at this and then we'll meet in two weeks and where will that get us?
I think we'll be able to further determine if, how this language applies to that type of sign modification where it's perhaps in a, on a property that is not owned by that particular business or is more than what the allocation is.
But if, but, but if it's, but if it's not owned by that particular business, then it's not a problem for that business. It's, it's a problem for, I guess, Pam Sandler, if she owns the second floor.
Who would be the property owner? Yeah, that's.
Yeah, I, I don't think.
If she wants to, if she wants to advertise somebody else's business, that, that's fine. But then it would still be the same regulation in this. So say she already has, you know, a certain amount of window coverage and then wanted to have this window decal of a sheep or a cow or whatever it may be. And then you're over the 15%, then it doesn't matter what the decal is of. She's not in compliance with the bylaw.
She's not, not the business below. The business below has nothing to do with it.
Lost lamb.
Yeah. So that's sort of my point. What do we, what are we meeting in two weeks to talk about? Having all looked at the, the signs, we won't, unless somebody investigates, we won't know who owns those decals.
I can call Pam and ask her if you want. Thank you.
Okay.
Before you decide that, though, just make sure that you realize that you're in, in, in practically giving upper level businesses the right to lease their sign rights to the front, to the, to the main retail establishment. Because what you're saying is that I can get around the sign bylaw by doing a deal with, by the tenants above me. All of a sudden, you're giving them 90 feet of signs instead of 30 feet of signs.
Good point.
Good point, Patrick.
That's why we need to continue this for two weeks so we can look at that issue of ownership of the sign.
So since we're going to continue it, can you guys think about one thing that's been on my mind a little bit? And that's as to whether by, albeit we're keeping the area the same, by increasing the quantity, does that become potentially clutter and tacky? That's just something I, I ask.
I think the square footage would remain unchanged, though. So I don't, the idea of writing it that way is that it wouldn't add to clutter.
Well, but you'd have increased potential for increased number of signs, right?
Correct.
And that's what I'm wondering, if that goes in the direction of, it's just something I want other board members to think about. And Roxanne, because I know Roxanne, you pay attention quite a bit to these details downtown, which I value. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, it's, do we have any multi-story businesses that would be putting, you know, signs below and above? Because a good example is the lost lamb. Lost lamb is downstairs. I think you just have to think about how it would be worded to say that the sign has to be attached to that business's leased space or own space. You know, the space that is actually delegated to that business versus the one on the second floor, which is a separate business entity. And of course, they could obviously have their own sign if they're complying with the, with the bylaw. You know, Pam could have a decal of her own if she wanted to. But that if there's a sign there that has to do with the establishment downstairs, that's, you know, you've gone beyond the pale. It should be not confusing to the consumer.
That's one issue, but I think what I'm asking is that by increasing the quantity of signs, does it potentially backfire? You know, you, you keep the area the same, but by increasing the actual number of signs you have, I don't know. Maybe I'm not being clear.
Well, I didn't get the impression, Phil, I don't, I'm not getting the impression that this is adding the number of signs. Is that correct?
I think it would be the difference between a higher quantity of smaller signs versus a lesser quantity of larger signs. That's, the idea was just to give some establishments more flexibility. But those choices are going to have to be on them. But that was, that was the idea of keeping the square footage the same. Because otherwise, if there's a loophole that doesn't account for quantity or size, then you can just have more signs and they can be huge. So that's why, you know, I felt that that part of the regulation should not change.
Gary, Gary, sorry, Kate, Carrie, you had your hand up?
Oh, I was just thinking that that was a nice suggestion, excuse me, that Roxanne had, that we should have something in there that says that the, that the signs need to be within the, the owned or leased space of the business that's applying for the sign.
Yeah.
If everyone on the board is, yeah, in favor of that, I mean, that's easy enough for me to add. That's just going to be another one of these little subsections.
Yeah, that strikes me as a neat way of dealing with this.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree.
So will you make that change, Phil, and then send it around?
Sure.
Please. So back to the parking bylaw. I guess we've agreed that we're going to defer this, continue the public hearing on, on the sign bylaw until our next meeting. Can we refer the parking bylaw to the select board? Are we ready?
Do you mean driveways? Parking still needs, yeah, parking still needs a little bit of work.
I'm sorry, the driveways. I'm sorry, I keep, I keep miss, misspeaking. Driveways. Do we, are we ready or do we need to have a, wait another week or two weeks for that, too? Is silence a scent? Sounds like it may be.
The, the, you're talking, I'm confused now. Are you talking about driveways?
Yes.
I'm okay with it.
Did we vote on two weeks for the, for the sign bylaw? Because I, we made that motion that that continue for two weeks. So let, can we vote on that and then?
Yeah, you're right. That is a motion that's been seconded on the floor. Is any further discussion about continuing the sign bylaw till our next meeting? Jennifer, would you call the roll, please?
Gary.
Hi.
Marie.
Hi.
Bill.
Hi.
Wayne.
Hi.
Kate.
Hi.
Christine.
Hi.
That's it, because Nancy still isn't around.
Right. Okay, so now on the driveway bylaw, are we ready to refer that to the select board as Christine mentioned a few minutes ago?
I would just add, pending, you know, the one last pass that I'll make at it. So it'll have that cover page and then you'll also have two versions, the clean and the markup. So pending those revisions.
So since we are still, we'd like to look at those, those changes, not changes, but those documents. Maybe we continue this for two weeks, too.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Totally.
Okay. Can I have a motion to continue?
So moved. Second.
I'd like to say all in favor, but I can't. So Jennifer, please call the roll.
There's a shorter way.
Gary.
Yes.
Marie.
Hi.
Bill.
Hi.
Kate.
Hi.
Wayne.
Hi.
Prizine. Did I call everybody? I think I did.
This is almost as stupid as not being able to talk at site visits.
There's a shorter way to do it.
What is it?
Historic preservation does it. They just say, I Carl, I Pete, I so and so, and it goes pretty quickly.
What's the difference?
What's different? Somebody's calling the roll or somebody?
You don't have that.
I think it's ridiculous, but we were told to do it this way, so. Let's see, is there any other business? Phil, are you finished? Have we cut you short or?
I mean, I have parking up.
Yes.
So this is the draft that was sent out, you know, roughly a week ago. I heard some feedback on it and there was still concern over having this cutoff, so to speak, of, based on legal occupancy. So I mean, the issue is, is it kind of singles out the larger businesses, of course. But then it also kind of limits the type of establishments or the scale of establishments that would be allowed in the business district. So that's a, I'm just trying to find a balance because the hard part is, you know, on one hand, you do sort of want to restrict it because you don't want huge businesses in that area. But on the other hand, how do you, how do you come up with that number? So I arrived at 50 from talking with Ned again. But then it turned into a conversation of expansion for current businesses and having it at 50 might in fact be too low.
So what would happen if a, a new business came into town and wanted to take over a space and convert it or actually maybe even build something new? I'm not sure where they'd do it downtown. And they came up against this bylaw. They needed more parking.
As it's currently written, I mean, that's the problem, is that it's pretty much impossible to follow.
So, so do we, are we able to grant a variance on application? So, so do we, are we able to grant a variance on application? I mean, we may be very terrible to see this new business come into town and give them some slack. I'm.
I think rather than, you know, issuing variances and also allowing virtually every existing business to just exist in non-conformity, it's better to just rewrite the bylaw so that everybody's in compliance. It seems to me that i- if it's impossible, if it's a physical impossibility to have these parking requirements, then it, it just, it needs to be removed, I think. The issue that came up in some previous meetings, though, is, you know, is there a way to draw the line? Because there was a concern that some of the larger establishments, particularly Red Lion, would then have the option to reduce or even remove their parking. So that, that was the concern. But, you know, again, it's hard to find that balance, you know, as it is, virtually every business is non-conforming and you know, that's, that's just the norm.
So what would have to change to make all businesses or most businesses in compliance?
I think the short answer would be for this top bullet point where it just says business district. It would say no off-street parking spaces are required for establishments that exist within the business district. And then everyone would be in compliance with that. But then the issue would be, as expressed in previous meetings, whether or not establishments which may already have parking would choose to get rid of that parking.
And how would a business stay in business if they eliminated the parking that already exists?
Right.
Yeah, everyone would be forced to park on street.
Which, of course, they can't do because there aren't enough parking spaces. So if you already have an establishment and you already own property and your own private parking lot, why would you get rid of it?
In fact, you'd be shooting yourself in the foot. Can you imagine the Red Lion eliminating its parking behind the building?
Yeah, because how are people going to come and stay?
Yeah, I don't think it's a likely occurrence, but it did come up in a previous meeting that that, that that could be a potential.
Yes.
And maybe not eliminating parking altogether, but imagine if you wanted to expand the building. For example, you could reduce parking just to have, you know, more, more footprints to expand the building.
Yeah. Marie.
Um, back when we first were talking about this, can you hear me? It doesn't look like.
Yes.
Okay. Back when we were first talking about this a year ago, and I talked with Ray about like the Red Lion Inn, and what he said was, the Red Lion Inn is a hotel and they need parking for that, because that's listed in our things. The restaurant, he doesn't have parking for. I mean, if you're going to go eat at the Red Lion Inn, you park on Main Street. If you're a guest there as a hotel, you, you have to have parking, because that's one of the things listed, two parking spaces for each sleeping room. But the hotel itself, I mean, but the restaurant part of the Red Lion Inn doesn't have parking, doesn't, isn't required to have parking now anyway. So that, he felt, wouldn't change that. So, you know, everybody that eats at the Red Lion Inn already parks on Main Street. If they're staying at the hotel, there is parking and that's a different thing. So the Red Lion Inn parking may not really be an issue. I'm concerned with the churches and the library having a 50-person parking if you have a wedding or the library programs. I'm sure some of the things I've been to there have more than 50 people. I think we have to be careful limiting, because once again, you get into well-intentioned problems. I mean, I think just taking out the off-street parking makes a lot of sense. Or the downtown parking, you know, the downtown off-street, whatever.
I tend to agree with that, Marie.
Yeah, me too. I think it simplifies things.
I think the big issue is the lot near Michael's where a lot of people park when they go into the post office. And I believe that is private property. I don't think it's public property. And so it could be a problem if that became a patio dining area, for instance, or something like that. So that would be my concern.
But isn't that his option if he wants to do that to his business?
Yeah, that's private property. So he can do that if he would like to.
He could, he could do it now. He could do anything with this parking. It belongs to him. You know, I mean, it's not guaranteed that he's going to keep it parking.
I'm not sure the James or the bank would be all, would be thrilled with that plan. I know he owns that building too, but there are tenants who need parking.
Right, right.
Tenants is different.
So why would he close up that parking lot? He wouldn't.
Yeah, I don't see it, sort of the same, for the same reason, the Red Lion wouldn't close up its parking lot.
And he's been very accommodating, actually, because if he wanted to police that with somebody out there and say only people that visit his establishment can park there, boy, it would, it would put a hurting on many people that just use it as a matter of convenience.
Including me.
Everybody, yeah.
Yeah. So what, what do we want to do with this?
This also says that it would, the first three lines under general regulations say it was, applies to the development of new or any change. So I think that it probably wouldn't have that much effect on what is there now.
That's a good point. So do we want to eliminate, you know, 6.2.1A? And then go with the rest of it?
We're going to have a public hearing on this so we can solicit input. So I think it really doesn't matter what we say. If we eliminate it and people come out and say, no, we want it, or the other way around, we will have information to make the final decision. So I don't, I'm fine with going with it the way it is, letting people, let us know what their thoughts are.
So my only suggestion for a change might be, as I said, removing that cutoff based on the occupancy and just simplifying it and saying that it's not required. And then, as Christine said, you know, solicit what kind of feedback you can from the public.
I would agree with that.
Okay, so. So make that change, please, Phil, and then we'll continue both of these till the next meeting. Or, let me put it this way, I will entertain a motion to continue the off-street parking by law to the next meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Jennifer, hopefully, maybe for the last time tonight.
Gary.
Hi.
Marie.
Hi.
Bill.
Hi.
Wayne.
Hi.
Christine.
Hi.
Kate.
Hi.
Okay.
Okay. Phil, are you okay with that?
I think so.
Anything else?
Not for me.
Any other business?
Motion to adjourn.
I'm not going to call the roll, and if I get thrown in jail for not calling the roll, to hell with it.
Yeah, that's right. Everybody's okay.
Night, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.